Good evening. We're going to proceed with tonight's meeting. Our regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, March 18th, 2015. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the night's meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Roll call, Sherri.
Commissioners Jagiello, Commissioner Merk, Commissioner Nicklin, Commissioner Zabilla.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Chair Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Lajowski.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Lajowski, would you lead us in pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, address our consent items. We have minutes from our regular meeting of the Planning Commission of February 4th, earlier this. So we need a recommendation to, for approval of the minutes from February 4th? A motion?
We didn't do public communication.
Oh.
I want to do that first.
Oh, because, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Pardon me, I skipped one of our items that we should most certainly, and that's going to be our public communication, and that's the time that's set aside, and Sherri, is this the only?
Deborah Pendry.
Okay. So, as stated earlier, public communication is the time that we set aside during our Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items of city business other than those scheduled on tonight's agenda. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and are placed on a subsequent agenda. Under a state law, other than for emergency items, no actions can be taken at this time. So I have before me one speaker's card that is not on tonight's agenda, and that's from Deborah Pendry. So Deborah.
Better start checking these off.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster, and my name is Deborah Pendry, 309 Riverside Road, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. The Coalition promotes water efficiency and conservation first, but as we all know, after reducing comes reusing, and water is no different. You may already know, but the County of Ventura has adopted a new gray water regulation tier that is coming down the pike to the cities in Ventura County. But as Steve Offerman at Supervisor Bennett's office shared with me, cities don't have to wait to be asked to formalize this new gray water installation tier. As you know, right now, we have two options. Under the California Gray Water Code, washing machine systems that do not alter the existing plumbing do not require a permit as long as the installer follows specific guidelines. This change went into effect in 2009 and written into the state plumbing code in 2011. This is identified as Tier One. The other option has been everything else, which could be very cumbersome and an expensive process. Now, thanks to Steve Offerman, who happened upon an article that Los Angeles County did this legally, a Tier Two option exists at the county level. This allows a resident to install a gray water system on other allowable single fixture systems such as a bathroom sink and shower, if again, it does not change the existing plumbing and its gravity fed. Now, it does require a permit, but the process has been streamlined and made very easy for residents and with an inexpensive permit. Tier Three will continue to be the more extensive systems that could use, that would use pumps, change plumbing, and et cetera. The Coalition is actively working on gray water education and support for the community. Upcoming, we have a laundry to landscape presentation at our popular Friday night potlucks. This one is Friday, March 27th. Then the next day, Saturday, March 28th, we are hosting a gray water home tour. And finally, Saturday, April 25th, we are conducting a do-it-yourself gray water installation workshop. All details can be found at the Green Coalition website, ohiavallagreencoalition.org. Ojai Valley Green Coalition dot org. Gray is the new green. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. I think it's very timely that we, and appreciate the Green Coalition's effort to keep the environmental drought issues in front of us as we proceed through this trying times. So thank you for that, Deborah. Now, we're going to move on to the consent items. The first item is minutes for our regular meeting of the Planning Commission on February 4th.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve meetings of our regular meeting on February the 4th. Can I do all three at once? Or should we do them?
We promote.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Zabilla.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Lajowski.
Yes.
Okay, minutes of the special meeting of the Planning Commission last February 9th, 2015.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the special meeting of February, of Planning Commission, February 9th, 2015.
Roll call.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Zabilla.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Lajowski.
Yes.
Now, the minutes of our regular meeting, Planning Commission, February 18th.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular meeting, the Planning Commission, February 18th.
Second.
I'll make a second on that.
Roll call.
Nolan.
Yes.
Or Zabilla.
Yes.
And Foster abstain.
Abstain.
And Lajowski.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts on tonight's agenda items. Commissioner Zabilla.
I have visited all the sites, and I've had no ex parte contacts.
I visited the sites, and I did receive a phone call from a member of the public regarding the tennis academy, and the property owner had invited me to come to the property. I declined, but I have been to the exterior portion on the public space to observe. Thank you.
I have visited the sites, and I did receive one phone call from Mr. Wild concerning story polls.
I've visited both sites, but I've had no ex parte contact with either applicant.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'd like to hear from our municipal advisory council planner. Please come forward, Terri, and let us know who you are.
Yes, good evening. I'm Terri Wright, and I am with the Ventura County Municipal Advisory Council, and we did have a planning meeting on Monday night, and Mr. Lajowski was there for representing your commission. We had three items on the agenda. The first item was a cell tower modification to a CUP, and it was addition of some cell equipment to the existing tower, so it passed without any issues. And the second one had a little bit more interest. It was a permit adjustment, and it was the, for the movement of Starbucks from their current location into the Wendy's restaurant location, and there was quite a bit of public input on that, and apparently, there were a lot of people in the neighborhood that didn't like living next to Wendy's because of noise and traffic and other things. So there was a lot of discussion, and the county planning people that were at the meeting promised to work with the public people and do whatever they could to resolve some of the issues. And so the MAC gave the approval with the condition that the county was going to work with the public as much as possible and solve the issues, and they did have a representative of the National Starbucks Organization there who said that they would be willing to do what they could. So, we'll see what happens. And then the third one was called a low-impact development study, and it's looking at taking drain or storm water from various areas around the county and cleaning it by putting it into swales across property and letting it go through the plants and clean itself, and then put it back into the storm drain. So, the land conservancy has agreed to allow their property over by Miners Oak School to install a swell there, and they will actually take water from Lomita, dump it into the area, clean it up, and then put it back into the storm drain and allow it to go back into the system, and they will have a catch basin on the way in to catch the larger debris and some of the nastier things, I guess, and then on the way out, they're going to have a catch basin where they will be able to test the water and see if it really is coming out cleaner than when it went in. So it's going to be a study. They wanted to do it in several other areas in the valley, but they didn't have enough money to cover everything, so they're going to do it one step at a time. Anyway, and that's it. Any questions? Any further comments?
I just, I think it was, it was really interesting and eye-opening. I think, as you said, I mean, the Starbucks issue was interesting in the sense that I didn't realize they didn't need to do a traffic study at the location since it's an existing drive-through. I think a lot of the comments came to that, but as you said, I think through, you know, the discussion and discourse, it sounds like the people who had concerns reached a decent compromise, and Starbucks did seem at least willing to work with people. So it was definitely a very interesting meeting, and I was happy to be there.
Oh, good. You can come to the next.
I encourage everybody to go check it out.
And I'll, I'll put in one more plea. We are still looking for people to join the committee, so anybody living in the county that would like to represent the county in the Ojai area, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So the next MAC meeting is scheduled for April 20th, and we have Commissioner Merk scheduled to attend that meeting for our commission. So at this time, we're going to proceed into our public hearing items, and tonight's first item is a design review permit, 11-05 RV 02, modification to the Wild Tennis Academy, Phase Two and Phase Three, including a request to add a new 1,250-square-foot Commons building to the west wing of the existing building at 428 Bryant Circle. That, of course, is in Ojai. Assessors parcel number 023-0-190-060. I'd like to hear from staff at this time.
So I'm going to go and hand this over to Diana Gould, our contract planner, and she's going to present tonight for us.
Sherri, how do I do this? Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public. We've presented, we've prepared a PowerPoint presentation in order to kind of walk you through the process of what the applicant is proposing. We thought that that might make that a little bit more clear for you. What do I do? How do I do this? Well, we did prepare a PowerPoint presentation. Are you cooking it? Because I think he's doing it. Is she, is he doing it? Okay, there we go. All right. To give you a little bit of background on the project, back in January of 2012, the city council approved a conditional use permit, design review permit, lot line adjustment, and associated entitlements for the project. Then later in that year, in June of 2012, the city council approved a zone change for the project. In 2013, the applicant came to the Planning Commission for a revision to the design review permit, which was approved by the Planning Commission. The current project consists primarily of a 12,000-square-foot Commons building instead of the previously approved on a one-story entrance, and some architectural design changes that are associated with that one-story Commons addition. There's a detailed table in your staff report, which is also available to the public, which has quite a lot of detail about the architectural appurtenances that are proposed as part of the new project. There was an 1,800-square-foot fieldhouse that was originally proposed. The applicant is no longer proposing to build that. In addition, in the tennis courts, the stadium court had approved a 35-foot light standard. The applicant is now proposing to reduce that light standard to 22 feet to be consistent with the other tennis courts. One of the items that came up at the last Planning Commission meeting was whether or not the project would be subject to the city's noise ordinance. Because the city, because the project is actually an approved school, it provides schooling for eighth through 12th grade students, and it is a licensed and accredited school, the project is exempt from the city's noise ordinance. The Wild Tennis Academy, which is part of this school, is part and parcel of the, of the project. Therefore, the tennis academy and its associated athletic uses, including the tennis tournaments that will be held on-site, are exempt from the city's noise ordinance. In addition, one of the items that came before your commission last time was whether or not the project would be subject to the public art requirement. The city attorney did determine that this proposed project revision is considered a covered project under the city's public art projects, so the applicant would be required to comply with the city's public art requirement, because any project that has a commercial value of more than $300,000 is required to comply with that requirement. The city council does have the option to exempt the project from this requirement, but the applicant would be required to appeal that decision to the city council and pay any appropriate appeal fees. One of the other items that has been brought up by several members of the public is defect in noticing previous iterations of this project. Again, the city attorney provided an opinion on this, and that opinion indicates that there's a 90-day statute of limitations for appealing any land use decision, and this includes any decisions that were made, even if the noticing was not appropriately done. This 90-day statute of limitations ran almost three years ago because it applies only to the original project as it was proposed. Therefore, any defects in public noticing are no longer some, is no longer something that any members of the public can contest and appeal. Furthermore, the Planning Commission is not able to make any decision on tonight's project based on whether or not there were previous defects in, in public noticing. The Planning Commission only has the ability to determine whether or not the refined, the required findings can be made in order to approve the project. Possible actions that the Planning Commission could take this evening are they could approve the revision as proposed, they could add additional conditions to the project, or they could disapprove the project. If the project is not approved, the applicant has a vested right to build the project as was originally approved in, in the last revision. Therefore, no, therefore, a denial of the, of the staff's recommendation would mean that the applicant can build what he has already been allowed to build. The applicant, of course, can always appeal the Planning Commission decision to the city council with an application fee and the associated application. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions from, from the commission.
Questions for staff? I guess I'm interested to know, the previously approved conditions, how do they coincide with revised conditions if this project should come before us and be approved with new conditions?
Kathy, I can answer that if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The conditions that we have established on the project for this revision very closely resemble the, the original conditions for the project, so there's really nothing, there's nothing new. Note that the lighting standards, as, as I indicated before, for the stadium court have actually decreased in height by approximately, by 13 feet. Therefore, that stated in one of the conditions, that the lighting standards not only are decreased by 13 feet, but again, the lights need to comply with the city's dark sky ordinance, which was not in place, I believe, at the time the original approval was granted. So at this time, the, the project would need to apply for that, but based on discussions with the applicant and the information that the applicant has provided, that lighting will comply with the city's dark sky ordinance.
Okay.
And the city attorney has one additional point to add.
Thank you. Additionally, the first condition in the resolution before you tonight on this DRP revision number two is condition number one, which provides, in short, that all previous conditions continue to apply, except as expressly modified by these conditions. In other words, any of the original conditions regarding the project, its use, most importantly, of course, the use, which has not changed from the original approvals, remain in place.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before we move into public hearing? At this time, at this time, we're going to open up to public hearing. I have, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we need to have the Wiles come forward and give their, I'm joking ahead a little bit tonight. Sorry, Mark.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. I would suggest opening the public hearing, then having the applicant speak as part of the public hearing.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
I don't think we've ever proceeded that way before. That's a new twist, but, okay, then, we need to, just open up the public hearing at this time. Does that require a motion then?
No, no motion is required to open the public hearing, just for action.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Now, we'll hear from the applicant. That's correct?
Yes. Great. My name is Mark Wild, and I'm 309 Park Road in Ojai. I'm the owner and founder of the Wild Tennis Academy and College Preparatory School at 428 Bryant Circle. I just want to, my architect Larry Graves is going to put up a couple of storyboards just to show the commission, the site plans, the previously approved revision, and the new proposed. So we're not going back to 2011 anymore. This is 2013, what we, what was approved in 2013, and how we want to revise it for 2014. A couple of things I'd like to get into the record, please. I don't know, do I have a limit on my time? I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to take a long time. There's been a lot of, a lot of, not a lot, a little bit of controversy surrounding this, and so I wanted to make a couple of things clear, and that is, first of all, that I love Ojai. It's a, it's a truly magical valley. It's been so good to me and my family. We are so lucky, we're all of us so lucky to live here, and we're so lucky to share this valley together, so lucky to raise my children here, to work here, to be able to work here and live here and send my children to school here. It's just, it's, it's been so wonderful to us, and to my wife and I and my kids. We also have been so fortunate to be able to raise our, our other people's kids here at the tennis academy and to help place them into colleges to study and play tennis, which is really, it was a, it was a no-win situation. It was a no-win idea when we came here, and it's been so wonderful to see it happen and to see it grow and to see it before you now. No one wants to protect the quality of life here more fiercely than I do, and I, and no one works harder to be a good neighbor than we do at the academy. A choice, 17 years ago, my wife and I had a choice. Am I on? Am I on? We had a choice, and we chose to buy our property at 309 Park Road, which was across from Sarzati Park, which has 35-foot light poles directly across from our front door. And we chose to purchase that property because we loved it there. We loved the football games, the basketball, the soccer, the softball, the noise, the traffic. We really enjoyed that, and we feel like we're fairly fortunate to be right in the middle of town and to enjoy that activity across from our house. But that was our choice to purchase our property there, and we live with that choice. We've been operating the academy for 18 years in the same location, and we've never had any complaints from our neighbors. Zero. We know how to conduct ourselves as good neighbors. I didn't know the, the neighbors that have had the most issues with us so far in this process, didn't even know them until last December, had never met them before. So again, we know how to be good neighbors. We intend to be good neighbors. We feel like it's the spirit of Ojai to be a good neighbor. Our project has never been a secret. We've been quite a bit, we've had quite a bit of publicity in the Ojai Valley News over the past four years, including front-page articles in the Ojai Valley News about our project, so even if someone missed a notice, I don't know how you could miss all the publicity that we've had about our expansion. We've had five separate meetings at Planning Commission and City Council noticed by mail and in the Ojai Valley News from November 2011 to December 2014. We are planning to build tennis courts next to existing tennis courts. We're planning to build a little bit of seating next to tennis courts with built-in seating. We plan to have lights on the courts, as is our right. Our property is owned PL, which is recreational zoning, just like Sarzati Park, and the closest proposed court light pole is over 475 feet from the nearest home, and its elevation at the top of the pole sits six inches higher than the nearest home next to the project. These are the facts. Our neighbors should also feel fortunate that they live near our property, as we are good neighbors. We have been good neighbors these 18 years, and will continue to be good neighbors as long as we are there. I want to jump to a couple of points that we had to address with city over the past two months. Even though our project has been approved and our rights to build our tennis courts are vested, as is clear now, we've happily agreed to do the following. We did the photometric study, and it, I think it came out very positively, showing that there is very, very little spillage off the courts, as we, we wanted to make sure that that was true. The lighting plan, we've submitted that, which again, I think shows that very, very, very little impact and very far away from any sort of residential consequence. The city attorney determined and gave us instructions that we were exempt from the shade and shadow study, so we did not perform that. The story polls, we have done the story polls on two, two of the courts, as when we met with the Clarks and Daryl Ralston of Persimmon Hill a couple of weeks ago, they asked us to do two of the courts' story polls, so we were happy to do that, but this was obviously done at great expense. We've agreed to lower the light standards from 35 feet to 22 feet, so please feel free to put that condition on the project. We're, no problem with that. The noise study, again, we did not perform a noise study because we were instructed by the city attorney that we were exempt from this study. Public art, we'll deal with the city council on that one. The parking plan that was requested, we've done the parking plan, and we've actually gotten three, not one, but three reciprocal agreements for parking. The Ojai Valley Athletic Club, the BST Building with 79 spaces across the street from us, and 420, I might be getting the address wrong. We have a third reciprocal parking agreement with 420 Bryant Circle. Am I right on that, Mr. Parrots? For another 39 spaces, so we feel like with the additional spaces that we've, that will appear now with this revision, not doing the fieldhouse and just doing the commons, we've added about 15 spaces to our, our property, and we've added reciprocal agreements all around the neighborhood, which is great. Number nine, pedestrian circulation plan, we did that as well. I think that that's pretty easy and clear. And number 10 was, we were asked to meet with the Clarks about our project, which we did. We had a cordial meeting. We went over many of their concerns. Again, want to make very clear, we are listening, we are sensitive to everyone's concerns, but we have our rights as well. Our property rights are just as important and just as valuable to us, and we feel like we've gone above and beyond on this, and we would appreciate tonight the ability to move forward. So, thank you so much. Any questions, please?
Commissioner Zabilla.
Hi, Mr. Wild.
Hi.
Can you say a little more about the substance of your parking agreements? Do they, are they made with, just with the individual landowners? Do they, they don't run with the land? They, are they for a term? Are they for a certain term, or?
They've all agreed, all, well, the term with the Ojai Valley Athletic Club is for 100 years, basically. With BST, it's with the owner, the owner of the property, signed a reciprocal agreement. He checked with the tenants. Same with 420 Bryant Circle. They checked with the tenants and found out that it was okay. Again, we are only proposing two to three weekends per year maximum that we might have overflow parking into those parking lots. So they're only for weekends that we can use them, and only if it's overflow from our property.
But they're in writing?
Yes.
Those weren't submitted?
Yeah, they're in your packet.
Yeah, all three agreements have been signed. Thank you, though.
Commissioner Nolan.
Yeah, I, along the lines of the parking, yeah, my concern is you have the agreement with the present owners. If they decide to sell, there's a new owner, then would you lose the parking?
Well, possibly, possibly, quite possibly, but we also didn't include street parking, which we measured along Fulton Well, possibly, possibly, quite possibly, but, um, we also didn't include street parking, which we measured along Fulton Street, just around our property, which produced another seventy-six spaces. We give, uh, twenty-two feet per space, so we measured out Fulton Street from my driveway to Bryant Circle, and Bryant Circle around, right around 420. So on-the-street parking provided another seventy-plus spots. So we feel, again, with any event, we're, we just don't see it. We don't see using that many spaces, but they're there if we need them.
Do you, how many, okay, let's just, you know, hypothetical, how many vehicles do you foresee on one of those weekend events?
But we've never run an event, so...
Right.
I don't...
So you have no idea?
The Ojai Tournament is one of the events that would use our tennis courts.
That would be the April, right.
And that, those, uh, those, that event has never run over the existing parking lot. There's been, um, sufficient parking around the club, uh, to satisfy that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, uh, along those lines, uh, Mr. Weil, um, what, uh, the seating, proposed seating for the stadium seating, now, I'm assuming when you're doing a tournament, all your courts are in, are active until you get down to the final match typically, right?
Correct.
So, what kind of, uh, understanding that the students don't drive, they're, they're not gonna have cars, that's taken care of via vans and, and your, um, which you have in, in your, um, I guess in your agreement with the, with the students themselves. What are we looking at in terms of attendees, uh, numbers? Like, I think the stadium, did I hear, did I read somewhere a hundred and eighty, uh, seats?
A hundred and forty. Again, based on...
Trying to get an idea of the amount of people, and that will help us, I think, all clarify how many cars we may be looking at.
I think, I think the stadium court, uh, maximum could hold about a hundred and forty people, maximum, and then possibly another forty viewing.
Standing.
Standing, exactly. So about a hundred and eighty, so if you did, if every, I don't think everybody would drive a car, but, um, we've wanted to figure a hundred cars. The Athletic Club and the Tennis Academy alone would satisfy that number. Not even using our, our extra parking lots, so...
Okay. Commissioner, uh, while we're talking about tournaments, we all know about the Ojai, uh, Ten- Valley Tennis Tournament. How, how do you see that playing out with the use of your, not, not that specific, uh, tournament, but additional tournaments? You mentioned earlier two to three weekends a year. Are you, is that like, uh, virtually saying two to three tournaments a year, or...
Yeah.
The frequency of use is what I'm getting at here.
Applied for one other tournament, um, in October, on a weekend in October, October 3rd, I think, or 3rd, 4th, 5th, where, again, we would just use the courts at the, all, the whole Athletic Club. In other words, we wouldn't just use our four, we'd use the entire club. Um, for a junior tournament with limited draws, um, again, the kids, junior tournaments, most kids don't drive, so they would come with their parents. And again, I don't know if you've been to a junior tournament lately. They're not well-attended. There's not really spectators. It's the, the kids' parents. And, uh, maybe us, a couple of coaches and so forth, so it's, these are not huge events. We're not, uh, we're not gonna have the Who come in and do a concert. You can put that as a condition as well. But we're just gonna, tennis turn, it's, we're, the kids are gonna play tennis, which is what they do now, and it's not gonna be huge events. We can't, we can't support huge events at that club. It's just too small.
Okay, so the Ojai Valley Tournament is by far your biggest event.
That's the, by far, as far as spectators go.
And in terms of these junior, uh, uh, tennis, uh, events, they would be ju- limited to just a, a few a year max? I mean, I'd...
I'd say one.
Are you projecting any more in the future, and...
I, I'd like to have the, the ability to do a third tournament, but, again, I, nothing is in the plans. I don't have anything planned at this point, but I would like to have something, and, again, once you get to the... Also, when you run a tournament, also commissioners, I, you can't just use one facility, so we would be using Libby Park. We'd be using possibly Thatcher School. We'd possibly use Villanova. I mean, we'd, we'd, we'd need to use more courts than we have. We, the whole tournament would not be played on our courts.
Great.
Oh, Ojai Valley, and two, if they were nice enough.
Additional questions? Legal counsel has a question.
Uh, more a statement than a question. I wanted to turn the commission's and the public's attention and Mr. Weil's attention to the original final conditions of approval for the original set of permits, which, Condition fourteen, this is Exhibit A to the proposed resolution. Uh, Condition fourteen requires, prior to the annual tennis, tennis tournaments, that there be a city-approved event parking management plan. So that should help assuage some of the concerns regarding parking for the tournaments, because it requires that in advance of each tournament, there be an approved parking plan approved by the Community Development Department that will look at the expected spectators for that, and for that year's tournament, and the parking arrangements, ensuring that all of the agreements are in place, and that the, um, if any parking requires off-site shuttle, shuttle service, that that's in place, et cetera. And that's in the existing conditions of approval.
This is required on an annual basis, every, every year?
Every, for each of the annual tennis turn, for each of the annual tennis tournaments, and I think the focus here is the main tournament, the, um, the Ojai Tournament.
Okay.
And we don't run the Ojai Tournament. I mean, the Wild Tennis Academy does not run that event. They use the Athletic Club's courts as part of that event, which, again, is spread out all over the city, as we all know. So that use, I, I, I would expect that the Ojai Tournament will now happily use my courts for, uh, some matches, but they haven't said for sure that they're gonna do this, but I'm sure that this is not gonna add, uh, uh, whatever. If it adds any parking, I'm sure we'll have a plan in place. We put it that way.
All right. Any further questions for applicant? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Weil.
Great, thanks so much. Did you wanna hear from the architect at all about the site plans?
If he has anything he'd like to add to it, please come forward, yeah, sure. This is your time.
Um, I just wanna expand. Larry Graves, architect with Alliance Design Group. I just wanna expand on a few of the points. Uh, point number five about the story polls. Um, I personally certified the heights of those polls, and that was in accordance with Steve Stewart. He reviewed my certification application and approved it, so I was granted that approval. Um, another thing is, uh, the site plans, and I wanna just emphasize it on A point zero. I'm sorry, A point one. We describe, we describe the number of parking spaces available. And I'm just gonna read these off. Forty-one existing site parking spaces, eighty-five off-site on the Athletic Club, forty-three street spaces, and seventy-nine in adjacent parcel with parking agreements. That totals two hundred and forty-eight. So even at one person per car, we've pretty much got all the spectators covered, uh, with that parking.
Along with, is it okay if I come away from the mic?
Please, just speak loud, so everyone can hear you.
I also want to point out just one concept on the site plan. This plan, right here, shows the fieldhouse and the proposed remodel of the central area for a commons area. That was an approved site plan, and, and also a student patio. You can see it on your drawings, which is part of the exhibit, but the number of onsite parking was greatly reduced because of the onsite amendments. The A1 drawing, which is the proposed site plan, shows in gray the only addition of the commons area. So what the site got back was all the parking along the existing parking area. So currently, we have forty-one spaces on the site, where this one, uh, the approved plan, only had like around twenty or so. So we actually went back to our original and increased the parking availability tremendously. And, of course, this shows the eighty-five off-site at the Athletic Club, and then the rest are across the street, and then on the street. So those are the differences in the site plans. The, the small commons addition here compared to the fieldhouse, and then the, the general, uh, commons area in the center.
A quick question, if I may?
Yes.
Now, you mentioned eighty-five, uh, parking spaces associated with the Athletic Club. What are they using for their, uh, their customers, the people that visit the site club? Are the, are the, these are the same parking spaces avail- available to them as well? So there has to be a cooperative effort involved, so does that not negate the fact that you probably do not have access to all eighty-five parking spaces?
Very true. Let's just say hypothetically, it's fifty-fifty. We still get forty. We knock forty off of the two hundred and forty-eight.
Okay.
We're down to two hundred spaces. So I think that...
So it becomes critical that these parking agreements are, are solidly in place?
Absolutely.
To cover the, to cover the balance?
The jurisdiction, those parking reciprocal agreements are very important.
Okay.
And then, uh, another thing that I wanted to point out, uh, I attended the meeting with the Clarks, and we did have a very good discussion on the issues which we've addressed, you know, in our submittals. But I did wanna point out one thing. There was a discussion of the properties being adjacent. And I wanted to point out on a couple of documents which are in, in your packets, that the, the property of the academy is down here. Here's Pope Lane, and this little segment right here is the end property, or the north property, we'll say, of the Clark residence. They are separated by about twenty, thirty, forty feet, but in fact, they are not adjacent or touching. So here's another, uh, document here, and as you can see, again, from your exhibits in front of you, that the yellow lines represent the property lines of the two subject properties, and there's this gap in here which clearly represents that the lots do not touch. And this is the P and L. This is the M property, or the zone, and then this, of course, is the residential.
So is that north property line, is that going through the center of Pope Lane, uh, the extension of Pope Lane, or is it, as described by the fencing that we see when we write, when we walk the property?
I can't honestly say that. Pope Lane is a private lane, and I don't know whether it's owned to the center line or whatever, but the, the fact is...
I mean, that has everything to do with adjacency. Does staff have, know the answer to that? Any, any comments?
My understanding was it's, um, that they, each adjoining property owns halfway. That was my understanding. Um, we could verify that for you, but I don't know absolute certain...
And in addition to the halfway point, also keep in mind that there is an existing road easement on top of that benefiting the other parcels in the area, so it's...
Common.
In other words, it's important to focus not just on where the property lines are, but also on where the practical property lines are, taking into account the fact that the road easement, the area of the easement for the private road can't be used for anything other than a road.
Understood.
Right, and then just if I could, uh, drive home a point, that this property line here does not touch the academy property line, so therefore it's not adjacent. Even if there is an easement, a road easement, or anything. No, it is adjacent to the Athletic Club, clearly, but not to that, to there. And I'm just gonna leave these up here on the floor, obviously. I'll, we need to refer to those in a later time.
Okay, do we have questions for the architect? Further questions?
Mr. Graves, I'm wondering, I don't have a real question. I just feel kinda disconcerted, but, like, from the audience. I'm wondering if, if we could take down that last board, just so... Oh, I have, I have it here. I'm sorry. I don't wanna, so we're just, it's just like, there's, it's like a big wall here. Okay, thanks.
It's quite well painted.
There they are.
Chair, I have a question, if I may. I was wondering if he could put up the new site plan and the old site plan, and just walk you through the changes. This is a question that staff has been asked over and over and over again, and since he has them, this is the first time I've seen them right next to each other. I would just ask that he, um, is, uh, my, it is staff's understanding that the modifications before you tonight are the architectural changes, the lowering the lamps from thirty-five to twenty-two, and the changing of the fieldhouse to a commons building. I do notice in these site plans that your property lines are different, and that on this one on the right, you do not show that jagged edge that you have on that one, and you, the tennis court got wider on that one, and now you have some pavement there, and I just wanna make sure that we're, those are not in front of us tonight, because I wanna make sure everyone understands what we're taking. This has been asked of me as staff to articulate to you exactly the sum total of the changes, so could you just go over those changes that you're actually... What exactly in sum total you're asking for them to take action on, if you don't mind?
Sure, could I like to address your comment about the, uh, the little...
Please feel free to put them back up, just... Wish there was a way we could show the public, uh, maybe after he describes it to this, we'll turn, we'll turn it around.
The original site plan that was approved was prepared by someone else besides myself. So I can't necessarily address the accuracy of that drawing, because I did not prepare it. I'm a licensed architect, and I prepared the current drawings which are before you for the proposal. That is represented by this drawing with my logo on it, okay? I investigated through the assessor's office in the county. The, uh, aerials that I had represented up here, I received from GIS, uh, weeks ago, which shows the latest property information. I also submitted the assessor's parcel map with the exhibit, and all of those documents for my investigation and my representation reflect this little notch down here in the corner. So I'm here to tell you that as an architect, that is correct, and I cannot answer why this was shown like this. It's not my drawing, okay? So, to answer your further questions, the main building is right here. Although it's not colored, it's right here also. This was an addition which has been approved and instructed, and certificate of occupancy, and occupied currently. The center area was a proposed commons remodel and addition. The other part of this project was a detached fieldhouse, shown by this lighter gray area right here. The differences are, this is already built. This is going to stay relatively the same, however, again, at last Planning Commission hearing, we presented drawings which, you know, complied with the commons architecture, and it did improve the, the appearance from the outside. Inside is gonna be basically the same. It's gonna be a big, open room. This area is a proposed detached twelve-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot commons addition. And it is going to replace functionally the detached fieldhouse, which was gonna be, of course, recreation, but also a commons area. So that is a big difference right there, and as we've always discussed, a lot of it is cost. But attaching the, the function of that to the main, uh, academy makes just a lot of sense for the students. They can stay totally in-house and get to their area. So those are the building differences. The courts, again, we've got, I've got information from my civil engineers for these courts. And these courts, if they're off by five feet, I, I kinda doubt it, because they're standards in court sizes, and so I would, excuse me, I would feel that they're probably pretty much the same. So, um, did you have any other...
Well, okay, so you have this, um, rectangle between the courts and the, the, yeah, if you go over there, point to it, no, over to the last, the other, other end, the first court, calling that one the first one. What is that? That's not shown on the other site plan.
Okay, that was basically just, oh, this walkway here, or this, I'm sorry, this rectangle here, um, maybe mark and address...
What is this? What is this?
It's not laid out.
This rectangle right here. This is now just a, like a planting area now here. That's all it is. It's just not hardscape. This is hardscape, and then this is not softscape. So this is the same sidewalk that would have been, well, actually, this was an entire patio. So this was all hardscape right here. Now we've eliminated most of that, and now this is softscape. Softscape, what is it?
Okay. And then, just from my vantage point, when you get to the last tennis court over there, yeah, is that new? Where you have your finger? Because that isn't, appeared to be shown on this other one.
No, it is. It's right here.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just want to make sure, because you know, as we said, we were very clear in the staff report, I'm sorry, is my mic on? Very clear that the only things they could really take action on were the things that you were changing. And I just wanted to make sure because it's very obvious that the property line has changed before me tonight. I'm seeing that, so.
Yeah. This jagged edge is right here. It's just very-
Oh, just very faint? Okay. Excellent. Okay.
Not changing anything.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for walking it through. I want to make sure. So in some total, in summary, the things that I said before are the things that you're changing. The architecture, the removal of the fieldhouse, adding on the commons room, or commons building, and then lowering the lumineers. And so there's nothing else that we've missed in that?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
What about, is that parking area on the southeast yearly side where the fieldhouse is now? Where the fieldhouse was removed, was that extended out? Is that the same dimension? That looks different. The finger on it looks-
The driveway, with this proposal, especially-
Right, right. Doesn't that, that looks like it got moved out.
You have to move this driveway over with this, get to keep the driveway right where it is.
And so subsequently, you get to add additional parking because of that? So there is a change to the layout of the parking, right?
And the benefit is, and the obvious, is that this is an existing driveway. It will not be changed.
Okay.
Because we had told you, if we were adding the song to, we had lost a lot of spaces around here as well. The fire engines have to come through here. So we gained all of this back.
So you gained additional, I think you said about twenty parking spaces because of that? Okay. Yeah, it was hard to see from here, and now that you've explained it, it makes more sense. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. We'll move on to public comment at this point. I'm going to go through, I've got quite a few speaker cards here. So please be mindful of the three-minute time period. The first one I have is, I believe this is Julie Tumamite Densley. I don't know if I-
Good evening. Julie Tumamite, three-six-five North Poli Avenue, Ojai. Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to read this whole letter. You know, getting up now and speaking on projects where the confidentiality is very important. But I do want to remind the city and planning that, you know, I want to know, there's projects that are under review. They, you know, we're trying to understand why the city isn't quite getting the consultation properly, following the guidelines of SEQA and their own Ojai general plan. In the master environmental assessment of nineteen-eighty-eight, and I quote, "The entire Ojai Valley is an archaeologically sensitive area with various known or suspected archaeological sites in the city of Ojai." The two projects that are under review are scheduled to be approved or in highly sensitive areas with registered sites, archaeological sites. The likelihood of finding any intact sites is highly probable. To be able to be standing here right now with these items on the agenda already, there was a meeting February sixth with staff, and we had these items on a list of potential questionable projects. And we had not really had a chance to consult or do any findings here in what kind of research data to come to the conclusions to where these two projects are at right now. So with this particular project, I believe that at one point, there was a recommendation for cultural resource monitoring, but then it got off the table. So I don't know where that stands now. If there's actually been a phase one done on this property, any research. And if there hasn't been, how can you come to a conclusion that there's nothing there? So, you know, our concern is that this, you know, important information is going to be lost for us. The cultural items are destroyed with them, and so are cultural heritage. If these projects are approved without proper mitigation measures, we'll never be able to put it all back together. We appeal to the city to put a hold on approving these projects until they are evaluated by an archaeologist and a local Tumash representative to ensure mitigation of potentially significant adverse effects, impacts. So I thank you for this time. I'm not going to keep it close, short. And I've got these letters that I didn't get out to you early. I apologize for that. But I'm going to give them to your city clerk. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would hear from staff on the, is there, isn't there an archaeology condition?
Yes, there's-
I thought there was.
There's a, on page eighteen of twenty-two, there's a mitigation. It's mitigation, it's contained in the mitigations that were incorporated, mitigation measures for mitigated negative declaration, CR one. And I can read it if you care.
Please.
Okay. Archaeological monitoring procedures for discovery of an intact cultural resources. The owner applicant shall have all earth disturbances, including placement of fill, monitored by a city-approved archaeologist. In event that archaeological resources are unearthed during project construction, all earth disturbing work within the vicinity of the find must be templar suspended and redirected until the archaeological, or archaeologist has evaluated the nature and significance of the find. After the find has been appropriately mitigated, work in the area may resume. A Tumash representative shall monitor any mitigation work associated with Native American cultural material. I think it's also important to note, and the city attorney might want to speak to this, is that again, this is a already vested approved project with its SEQA previously done in twenty-twelve, has passed its challenge point. So we're way beyond consultation and changing the mitigations of this, the mitigated neg deck that was done as the memo that went out to everyone about vested rights. And I don't know if Matt has something else to add to that?
Just a couple more points on the SEQA issue raised here, which is that the project, the modifications as proposed, which you were just walked through, do not increase the impacts that were analyzed in the M and D. In fact, they largely reduced them by reducing the height of light standards, reducing the parking, reducing, increasing the parking, thus reducing parking demand off-site, and reducing the square footage of the buildings, buildings, plural. That, the net of that is that staff's assessment is less impacts than were analyzed in the M and D, given that the basic land use remains the same. It's a tennis academy and a school with the same number of students and the same requirements as in the original approval with regard to the number of tournaments and the number of students. The net of that is that there's no evidence and no basis to reopen the M and D and require an amendment to it. It's sufficient as is because the modifications reduce the impacts. And this condition will, of course, require, as Ms. Wald read out, will require archaeological resource monitoring and cultural resource monitoring at the time of earth disturbance. And further, the AB fifty-two requirement for consultation with the tribes in certain areas if, which contain designated cultural resource sites, has not yet come into play. And more to the point, even if it had come into play as of now, because this proposal, the original use, the original approvals are vested in twenty-eleven or late twenty-twelve, the timeline for that process has run.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's clear that there will be a monitor on site during earth disturbance. Next speaker card, Mary Ann Williamson.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Williamson. I live at four-sixty Buckboard Lane, Ojai. I'm here for myself and for Dr. Tim Williamson. I'm just here to voice and validate concerns regarding lights and sound of Persimmon Hill and all our adjacent neighbors, Persimmon Hill and other. I'm just voicing my concerns. And also, I have not received any formal notices in the last three years to my property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Pat Tumamite.
Patrick Tumamite. I live at nine-nine-two El Camino Corto. I'm here in regards to the Wheel Tennis Project. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, commissioners. I would just like to ask the question, I believe it was in twenty-thirteen, Mr. Wheel had a, an additional add-on building to his property there that was recently built. And I was just wondering if at that time, were they required to have an archaeologist? Or was there a survey done during that project? And I don't know if I should be asking Mr. Wild or Ms. Wald whether they had an archaeologist on site. Because as it was just discussed about this project here tonight, they are required to have somebody on site. And I know for a fact, when they were building that additional building on the property, that there was no Native American monitor, there was no archaeologist on site. And I know that for a fact because I went out there.
Now, what building are you specifically addressing here?
The one that's an attached building to the, to the school itself.
The most recently added on?
Yeah, to the school itself. And like I say, if, and I believe his commitment to being, you know, committed to this valley and, you know, and the people, the community itself. But it is the job of the staff to see that these projects are addressed appropriately to the general plan. And I want to make that noted, that I absolutely did not see anyone there. So I hope that in the future, that we are trying to work with the staff and the council in regards to the archaeological and cultural resources in the valley, because it's important to our people and our community. I must say that there's plenty of history here, and this is why this valley is treasured pretty much, just like our ancestors treasured it. It's a very spiritual place, and it means a lot to a lot of people. That's why we are here. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tumamite. I have a speaker card from Darrell Ralston.
Good evening. Darrell Ralston, one-twenty-one Longhorn Lane. I'm the current president of the Persimmon Hill Homeowners Association, and I represent the Board of Directors and the residents of Persimmon Hill, who's adjacent to the project. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank Mark Wild for reducing the height of the tennis court lights from thirty-five to twenty-two feet. I think that was a big step in the mitigation efforts. However, I would like to ask the commission to recommend to the city some type of methodology for the residents of Persimmon Hill who may be negatively impacted by the lights and the sound and the parking once the project is completed, so that they can voice their concerns and enter into some type of organized conversation to hopefully mitigate those efforts. Thank you.
So you're asking for some sort of instrument that'll allow you to address a situation regarding noise or lighting?
Yes.
I think typically that would just be going back to staff and filing those concerns and see if there are violations occurring. But I think, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, I think that staff has been trying to be very clear that they're not subject to the noise ordinance. So if we received a complaint regarding noise, they're going to get told what has been said to you this evening, which is they're exempt because they're a school. And so there isn't really a mechanism that I know of. Matt, you want to speak to that?
Agreed. With regard to the noise issue alone, the code currently exempts public and private schools, which includes this project, because it's both a tennis academy and a private educational program that educates both international and US students. And as a result, it's exempt from the noise ordinance. So a noise complaint, there's no standard in which it's proposed against. However that said, I would, I'm going out on a bit of a limb, but I would suspect that if there was a particular noise concern at a particular occasion, a call to the Academy itself would likely result in some response. I would expect, based on the representations made by Mr. Wild, that he would work with the community and with the neighbors to ensure that if there was a particular occasion which was too loud or unreasonably loud, that he would work with the community on that issue. On the other concerns regarding the other impacts, again, it's a matter of, if the project as built or as operated doesn't comply with any one of the given conditions of approval, then a complaint would appropriately be made to the city, which would be reviewed and accomplished through the code enforcement process, looking at what the issue is and how does it relate to their approved conditions.
Yeah, and our concern is obviously if it becomes a nuisance to the residents.
If it becomes a nuisance, then there are options available. The city has options with regard to a nuisance, noting that a nuisance wouldn't be defined relative to the noise ordinance standards because, again, they're exempt. It'd be defined under case law, and which looks largely at a reasonless element, taking into account the use, the, near the proximity to the complainant and similar factors.
Now, isn't there a ten o'clock curfew in place and one of the conditions? I don't know if that was referencing lighting, maybe, probably not noise.
Yeah, it was lighting.
It's a lighting ten o'clock, ten PM curfew?
If a game is already engaged, they're allowed to complete that. So it's not, it's ten o'clock, but if you have a already, you know, a tournament or a game, or however you want to call it, going, you can complete it. I will just like to say, though, that they have supplied a photometric, they have lowered the lights. Based on the cut sheets and the lighting information that staff received, that's what we'll utilize to make sure that their lighting meets the standards before we issue the permit. Then we issue the permit, and we're going to go out there, and when they install them, then we verify that it's the right light, the right height. And then from that point, if someone were to come in and say, you know, hey, the light bothers me, all along the process, we verified there's really not going to be anything we can do because obviously, in today's Ojai, there's checkpoints all the way along the way. Also, I just want to say as far as archaeology, the monitoring for cultural resources, that's the same thing. We're going to make sure they have an archaeologist on, under contract before we issue a permit. And we do the same thing now. I can't speak to what was done before I was here. I have no idea. You'd have to ask the applicant about that. But all these things will be monitored prior to issuance. Then after they're installed, we check. And then, so there shouldn't be a reason that all of a sudden there'll be an issue, because it'll be checked all along the way. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ralston. Mike Borders.
Hello. Mike Borders, fifteen-oh-three San Gabriel Street. I've lived in Ojai about ten years. I'm an avid tennis player. I belong to the Athletic Club. I'm also currently the president of the Ojai Valley Tennis Club, which is a club that operates the Ojai Tennis Tournament. So if anybody has questions about the tennis tournament, I'd be the person to talk with, not Mark. Mark is gracious enough, well, actually, he doesn't have any courts right now. But the Athletic Club is gracious enough to allow us to use their courts for our tournament. We try to use all the courts we can get our hands on during the tournament. All the public courts, we use every public court in town. We use about seventeen or eighteen private courts for the tournament. I can tell you, if Mark builds these four additional courts, we'd be his biggest supporter because we desperately need more courts in the Ojai Valley. As it is now, we go down to Ventura and Oxnard area, and we use eight or nine different venues there. And overall, I think we use a hundred-and-twenty courts between the Ojai Valley and Ventura and Oxnard. So if we had four more courts that were maintained in good condition, as I know they will be if the Wild Academy is operating those courts, that's a boon to the tennis tournament. tournament. As a member of the Athletic Club, who plays regularly there, and as a member of the public, who occasionally plays over at the courts at Libby Park, I can say that we need the four additional courts for the Wile Academy, so we can move some of the academy kids from Libby Park, or from the Athletic Club at certain times, to these new four courts, as opposed to playing at Libby Park, as they now do in certain afternoons, or at the Athletic Club. So it benefits the tennis tournament, the Ojai Valley Tennis Club. It benefits me selfishly as a tennis player. We are also extremely supportive of the plans to build the Commons Building. Aside from the courts themselves, as a club, we need meeting space for our board meetings, which we hold six or seven evenings a year. And we have previously been using the Music Center Conference Room, the Ojai Music Festival, excuse me, Conference Room. And in the future, if this Commons Building is built, I think we might be able to work out an arrangement with Mark, where we could possibly use that building at six or seven evenings for some of our board meetings. So we're extremely supportive of this project for that reason. Finally, I will say that I've, as I say, I've lived here 10 years. I've known Mark essentially the whole time. I don't think there's a finer individual who's got the interests of the Ojai City more at heart than he does. I think his academy is one of the finest institutions in Ojai. And I think anything that he wants to do to improve the academy is something I would be fully supportive of. So.
Thank you, Mr. Borders.
You're welcome.
Linda Clark.
I'm going to defer to my husband and
Oh, that's fine. You want to state your name?
My name is Joe Clark. I live at 520 Buckboard Lane. I'm a little stunned that only Mark Wile is the only person that loves Ojai. Anyway, the lighting standard, the story poles tell quite a story. What the level shows and what I see from my backyard are two different things. I can see light standards from my, from my living room, from my kitchen, and from my back porch. If I go to my pool, I can see even more of them. And they rise, not just five feet, they rise quite a bit above the level. So, so there needs to be some kind of mitigation of that, and there needs to be some kind of viewing or observance by the Planning Commission, or the City Council, to see that. It's important that people understand that it's not, it affects us in a different way. And Mr. Wile is moving into a neighborhood and putting something up that affects the people around him. Is, for me, there's a conflict in that he runs a tennis academy, which is a for-profit organization, and a school, which is, it's a private school, but it's also a profit, for-profit, according to the California records. So he is a business that is a school. And that affects, that affects me in a way that it's like, you're using a school as sort of the hide behind something, or do something to promote your tennis academy. And for me, that's also an issue. The noise, the no exemption for the noise, again, I have a problem with that, because you're a for-profit commercial enterprise. You're going to be putting on tournaments. In the beginning, it was one tournament. Now it's two to three tournaments. So, and when you talk about 248 cars, if you have space for 248 cars, put two people in there. You almost have 500 people. And you can have your stadium for 140, but if you have, if you have tournaments running up and down, you're going to have people all over Bryant Street. And who pays for the police? Who pays for the maintenance of those roads? And those are all things that come back to us. And I would want to make another, we're not, we are not protesting the failure of the city to include us in the adjacent contiguous residential property owners, but rather, the City Community Development Department and the Planning Commission failed to include the residential properties within the 300-foot of the Wile project. This was discovered, this was just discovered, and I do not believe that the statute of limitations of to appeal is 90 days, is applicable in this case. And what I mean by that is, you have a letter in your packet that says there was an omission of the residents that was there. We also sent letters to the Planning Commissioner. We hand-delivered them here to the, to the City Hall, and there's only one response that we got, and that was from Kathleen Nolan. And, and according to what my wife was interpreted, she said she could not come out because it was a violation of the Brown Act. And talking to subject matter experts, that's not a violation of the Brown Act to come for, or Planning Commission to come and look at a property. The other thing which, to me, is disturbing is that Councilman Paul Blatts was involved in representing the Wiles in lawsuits in 2011, up to August 10th, 2011. And on January 10th, 2012, Paul Blatts voted yes for the project. So I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the way that this is going, that the way that it's been presented. And I think that there's been, along the way, there's been misrepresentations. I haven't checked all of the, how this is, but you had problems with looking at this. So I'm not happy about it, and I think there needs to be mitigation for the lights, and how they affect our property, and there needs to be a mitigation for the noise. And exemption from the noise does not stop what happens in my backyard. And if you're a good neighbor, then you would try to find a way to reach that. And not just, and not just say, I have a right to build. You have a right to build, and I have a right to where I live. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Robert Meyer.
Good evening. Robert Meyer, 550 Buckboard. Just a few comments. One, I'd like to express appreciation for the lowering of the tall lights from 35 to 22. I think that was a good move. That's directionally right, somebody else said. I also thought it was a good idea to get the story poles up, so people could actually physically see what these things are going to be. I still think they're pretty tall, but they are what they are. I don't totally agree, but I'm not going to fight it, that there has been substantial work investment done on the courts, so that the area is vested. I mean, they've taken down a eucalyptus tree, and that's been about the extent of the work that I've physically seen, other than the story poles. So, but be that as it is. There are several things that I would recommend that are in some of the documentations that Mr. Wile says he will do, but are all verbal. If he decides to sell this academy and school tomorrow, nobody's going to hold anybody to it. He talks about no people out on Pope Lane to observe the tennis matches. He talks about, I'll get the, we'll have the matches during the day. Only during bad weather will they run over. I'll only have maybe a couple, two, three matches or tournaments a year. I'd like to see that all in writing versus just verbal, so that it becomes something that we can use in the future. If he wants to change it in the future, fine, we can talk about it then, but I'd rather see it done in writing. Same thing with the lights being out at 10:00 p.m. I understand that that's not a requirement requirement if a match is going on. And getting the training done on what he calls Court Number One, which is the one closest to his building and the lowest one, versus having nighttime training on any other courts, that ought to be a written requirement. Finally, I think, my opinion, I've, to be honest, we've lived in this house now for going on two years. We owned it for about seven or eight. And, you know, recognize that there was an industrial park behind us. We have the largest, the longest stretch of common border between us and Bryant Circle, Bryant Park. I think right now, things are fairly good. You know, it's quiet back there during the evening. There are some lights I wish I could somehow mitigate, but that they're, been there for a while, so they don't fall under the current regulations. However, you know, the way things are written now, you know, you could have 24/7 manufacturing operations back in there. I think the original design, original planning of that area, to have an industrial area directly adjacent to a residential area, was just wrong. So one thing I would like the Planning Commission to think about in the future, because I know you've got some issues with people in there now that have business licenses, that don't quite meet the zoning requirements. As you start looking at that in the future, I would like you to be thinking in terms of, it's just not an M1 industrial zone. It's an industrial zone, yes, but it's a directly adjacent to a residential area. And I think that means that we ought to have something a little bit different in terms of requirements, like maybe no operations from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., so that the quiet and the lights are down. Just some ideas like that to be thinking about in the future as you go forward, because 20, 30 years ago, whenever they did that original designation, I think they made a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Williamson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I'm Ann Williamson, 1402 La Paz. And I'm also a member of the Ojai Tennis Tournament. And I realize that the value of this project will bring to our community, not just the tennis community, but also the community in general. I'm also a realtor with Cobal Banker, and I think actually, the beautification of this particular area will determine an increase in property values, if that may be something that the property owners in the vicinity haven't taken into consideration. But it actually will create a, like a higher level of destination, because it'll be a tennis center. And it, again, it'll increase visitors to Ojai, visitors who actually spend money in our hotels, some of them buy homes, because their kids are at the academy. They shop in our shops, and they also eat in our restaurants. So personally, even though I'm a tennis person myself, I can actually see that this project is going to be, bring value to the community as a whole. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. William Ulrich.
Good evening, William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. And I got here a little bit late, so I may try not to address a couple of issues that may have already been resolved. And listening to the drumbeat of vested entitlement and non-contiguous property lines that I did observe when I came in here, I kind of went, well, gee, sure sounds like everybody wants to make sure that this is all done and set. Now, the action-to-date assessment by Mr. Summers in the Planning Commission's packet, action-to-date doesn't go earlier than January 10th, 2002, on this project. There's an entire history on this project that is antecedent and predates January 10, 2012. And I would like to point out several what I consider to be deficiencies on part of the process, the processing by staff, and the processing by the Planning Commission and the city, since the Planning Commission has been dealing with this matter for years and years and years. Number one, the assertion that everything is vested is based upon assertions of failure of notice, which is pretty much, you know, mailing of letters out, and a posting in the newspaper. The issue is not that. The issue is, as I understand it, and this may be determined in a venue other than here, or in the City Council, it is one that in the planning, in the Community Development Department's planning approach, the residential area was not included on their overall site survey of types of zoned properties. Wasn't there. There's a vague reference to it in some text, but it is not on the title block of properties adjacent to this project, which would make it very clear to both yourselves and the public of what is being included. That, I believe, is a cardinal defect. Doesn't have anything to do with notice. It has to do with the scope of the planning inquiry ab initio. Now, since Mr. Summers makes reference to, in support of the statute of limitations, makes reference to Government Code 65, which one is it, Mr. Summers, 65? Oh yeah, I have it here. Yes, 65009. I'd like to point out that the General Provisions, Section A1, the legislature finds and declares that there currently is a housing crisis in California. It is essential to reduce delays and restraints upon expeditiously completing housing projects. I would go so far as to say that in the definitively asserted usage by the city attorney, and by Planning Department, and the Community Development Department, in support of, the door is closed, the horse has gone out of the barn, around the corner, and is gone, that may not be the case. Because this does not support a commercial project that this is. Number two, or maybe I'm already on number three, the Wile Tennis Academy and the holding company that is the applicant, is a commercial-for-profit entity. The fact that there is a school there, with apparently one teacher and 48 students, and many of the students attend Ojai Public Schools, is an adjunct to the operation that makes the money at $44,000 a student in the tennis academy. From a practical perspective, this is fiction, as far as the school aspect. Now, it is also my understanding that the issue of a public art has already been put to bed. You have in your packet, Exhibit G is, on its face, felicious and inaccurate. It doesn't even address the correct title or chapter of the city code. And then, when you look at the correct chapter and title of the city code, it's Section B7, sure doesn't say anything about private educational institutions. So I don't know where that came from, but it is in your official packet. And, once again, I wasn't privy to whether that got substituted at the last minute or what, but I was looking at it yesterday at 1:30. It was still in the packet for the public. So...
You need to summarize, Mr. Ulrich.
Exactly. Given how many, how many errors, omissions, poor interpretations, and oversights that have been applicable to this project, I do not believe that in good conscience, especially in a short quorum situation, that you, as the Planning Commission, should vote on this and send it to the City Council at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Williamson.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond to some of the assertions in that previous speaker's comments?
Please.
With your permission?
But I can respond then to Mr. Summers, because it's not fair.
One minute, Mr. Williamson. We're going to, one minute, please. If you can hold off on your comments, we're going to
The other option would be for you to allow the public to complete all comments, and then a comprehensive response by staff. That might be a better approach.
I think so, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Williamson.
My name is Dwayne Williamson, and I've been Ojai resident for eight years, and live at 1101 North Montgomery in Ojai. And I am a member of the Ojai Valley Tennis Club Board of Directors. And the one thing I want to mention, Mike Borders mentioned, that the Ojai Valley Tennis Club supports the Ojai Tournament, and Mike talked about the number of courts and so forth. One thing he did not mention is, more and more, because of the lack of courts that we have here in Ojai, we've been, have been forced to move more and more of the events down to Ventura and Oxnard. Last year, for the first time, we used Oxnard High School, where juniors' events are held, as well as this year, we'll be using Ventura High School. There's less and less private courts available to us, as the courts are not kept up, and owners don't want to put, invest money into the courts. Public schooling, funds are not going to support the tennis courts, so we've been having to move those over the years, and more and more into Ventura, and something we don't want to do for the Ojai Tennis Tournament. The second thing is, the mission for the Ojai Valley Tennis Club is really to promote and support the youth tennis program here in the Ojai Valley. And that's done several different ways. We support the Quick Start Program, that goes through all the elementary schools, where for a week period of time, each of the students, probably anywhere from third, fourth, and fifth grade, get exposed to tennis. We also conduct clinics and junior tournaments. This, again, is becoming harder and harder to do because of the lack of tennis courts in the area. Having to work with the Recreation Department, get the space at Libby Park has become burdensome to do. Mark Wile's been such a supporter of youth tennis over the years, that I know if we were able to get four more courts in the area, this would ease the burden of the courts, not only for the Ojai Tennis Tournament, but also help to support the youth in the Ojai community as well, too. So just wanted to mention that. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Summers, would you like to address this at this point?
Were there any other speakers?
All speakers are through.
No, I would like to speak now. My husband took three minutes. I would like to take mine.
Oh, okay. I thought you were recusing yourself from speaking. Please come forward. Please come forward.
Or? Thank you. What we're looking at here is where you see the arrow between the tennis courts and across Pope Lane, that is our property. The tennis courts that are going in are adjacent to four clay courts, which are over at the Ojai Valley Tennis, Ojai Valley Athletic Club now. And they are clay courts because in consideration, in 19, I think it was 1973, they realized, and they put on their designation and their zoning maps, that there was a residential area directly adjacent to the property. And because of that, they chose to mitigate. They needed to mitigate in order to be able to put them in. And the mitigation was to silence the court. It was also just, there are no lights on those courts, and there's a reason that there are no lights on those courts, because lights are a nuisance. So a clay court is very quiet, a grass court is even quieter. However, we've all been able to live together quite happily in this, in this relationship without a lot of problems. So to bring in something that is going to completely change the relationship between these different designations and not use mitigation factors that are very, very protective of the zone that the new project is coming to is in violation of the general plan. There's also section, we also have a section here in the general plan. It's Section 858105, 1.7, and it says, "The following list of specifically prohibited uses is not limited to, but includes nuclear power plants, stadiums." And that's right here, if you'd like to hand that out. And in all of the references, we talk about this being a stadium. So that is in violation of the Ojai general plan. Now, in addition to that, it was very hard for me to actually find who Mr. Wile and the Tennis Academy is, because he is not a not-for-profit, because I look for not-for-profit. He is a poor-for-profit entity who is not paying for the streets that he's using, who is not paying for the schools that the children are going to. However, he has contracted with this school called Great Schools, which is all over the nation, non-for-profit schools that come in and deal with European or Asian students who have a visa to attend. And it is very, very limited, very limited. And it is, he actually is licensed, not under the Wile Tennis Academy and Preparatory School. He is actually licensed by the State of California as the Ojai Grand Slam Investments LLC. So I'm not sure who we're talking to.
Thank you. Mr. Summers, did you want to address this on?
Yeah, I'll try to address some of the comments raised by some members of the public.
Go down your list.
On the previous concerns raised regarding both public notice and whether or not the staff report and the analysis in 2011 did or did not consider the adjacent residential property or how adjacent it was, or any of those aspects, that is all entirely irrelevant to your decision tonight, because that decision, which was finalized with the 2011 Planning Commission approval, then the January 10th, 2012 City Council decision approving all these permits, that decision is final. The Government Code Section 65009, which Mr. Ulrich read, the preamble to subsection A1, which was adopted by the legislature in the face of a housing crisis, but it's, the language of the section extends to all permits of this type, all land use entitlements. And the courts have repeatedly applied it to, as a 90-day statute of limitations, challenging any land use entitlement, with the sole exception of a challenge based on an affordable housing project where there is not an approved housing element. That exemption to the 90-day statute is inapplicable in this case. It's not limited solely to housing projects. The legislature adopted it in the face of a housing crisis, but the language they used and which the courts have applied, based on that language, is much broader and blocks any challenge to a land use entitlement decision from a conditional use permit or zoning clearance up through to and including a general plan amendment is barred after 90 days. So we don't need to evaluate exactly what happened in 2011 and 2012, because it's irrelevant to your decision tonight. And as I understand it, the noticing for this project was done correctly, with 300-foot notice. And moreover, as we've seen, the folks that asserted the notice issue before are present and thus have no notice issues. On the question of the exemption from the noise ordinance, the section of the Ojai Code, here it is, and this is in Title V, Chapter 11, Section 5, 1107, Subsection, sorry, scrolling to the right one. I didn't bring my printed copy. Six, seven. Section 5, 1107, exemptions. Following activities shall be exempt from the provisions of this chapter. It continues to subsection C, outdoor school activities, activities conducted on public playgrounds and public or private school grounds, including but not limited to athletic and school entertainment events. There's no further definition of the word private school in the code. Thus, private school means simply that, a private school. We've applied it to mean a program that is an accredited educational institution, regardless of whether it is for-profit or nonprofit. Thus, while Tennis Academy can take advantage of the exemption, so too could a for-profit college, a DeVry, an IT tech, something like that. They also would benefit from the exemption. That language is distinct from the wording in the public art ordinance, which refers not to public or private school, but rather to the state, the county, and the Ojai Unified School District, or any other governmental entity, indicating there the focus was on public schools and more particularly the Ojai Valley Unified School District. Because the exemption for the noise ordinance is worded differently, the City Council's intent in adopting it was to exempt all schools, public and private, as long as they're providing an accredited educational program, which, as I understand it, is the case for Wild Tennis Academy. And whether or not it's for-profit is irrelevant. With regard to the tennis courts and asserted impacts from the courts, because the decision is vested, and because they haven't proposed to change the location of the courts, they haven't proposed to reduce the number or increase the size or move them, or in any other way modify the courts, with the exception of reducing the height of the light standards on the one, on the larger court from 35 feet, subtracting 13 feet down to 22 feet, they haven't asked for any modifications on the courts. And thus, they are exempt, not exempt, they are vested. And the, any impacts from those courts that are a concern were, that concern is properly addressed to the Council and Planning Commission in 2011 and 2012. And at this stage, is again irrelevant to your decision tonight. I'm available to answer. Any further questions on these issues?
No further questions?
So the only thing, the only thing that's before us, the only thing we can weigh in on is the changes as exist in the table, the matrix, and/or the way that Ms. Wald explicated those changes.
Correct.
That's all that's before us. That's all that can be before us. Can we specifically condition, we can specifically condition, obviously, those things?
Right. The decision before you is a choice between two possible outcomes. One is the project is approved, the project, if you approve the modifications, then the project would be built with the proposed modifications. And you can condition the changes, but the conditions have to be limited to impacts caused by the changes. You couldn't add a condition that mitigates a concern relevant to a portion of the project that is not being changed. Or two, you could deny the proposed modifications, then the project would be built as approved, or could be built as approved if the applicant so wished. Modifying that which has not been proposed for modification is not on the table.
Before discussion, do you have one more comment?
Please, go ahead, as applicant will allow that.
Just, I have to clarify this. Come on, man. I mean, this is ridiculous. We have a website that is so accessible to everybody that explains all about our private school. We are completely accredited, certified, 55 students. Two of our kids got into Stanford and Johns Hopkins last year. I mean, to say that we're not a school, we don't pay our fees is ludicrous, ludicrous. We paid Fulton Street fees. Every time we have a permit, we pay OUSD fees, sanitation department, on and on and on. We contribute, just like anybody else in this city, are happy to do so and are happy to add to the, to the community here. We're not hiding behind anything. As I've said, this has all been transparent. This has all been right out there. If anybody does any real homework, any real investigation, they will see that these arguments hiding whatever else was brought up is absolute ludicrous, I think, in my opinion. And I do, I hope we do just focus on the modifications that we're proposing tonight, which are very simple. And I reserve the right, if, if this is not going to go through, I'm going to withdraw this application, and I'm going to go ahead and build what was approved in 2013. I mean, because that's what I'm left with. And again, this, all this came about because we're trying to cut back on the project, scale it back, save a little bit of money, and make it a little more beautiful. And again, as somebody said earlier, any improvement to this building would make it better. And that's all we're trying to do. We're just trying to, to improve our little school. And we really appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Mr. Wile. At this point in time, I don't think we were required to close the public comment. Is that right, Mr. Summers? Or we are required?
We are required to close the public hearing.
Then let's officially close the public hearing then at this point. We're ready for discussion.
I'd just like to make a comment that I hope, you know, I know this is an emotional thing for many people, and I just hope that we remember that, you know, we all live together and to take it easy on any character assaults on anybody, and let's stick to the project.
Thank you, Mr. Josky.
Okay. Well, I was not part of the initial approvals, but here we are, and it seems like the commission at this point is constrained to proceed along the lines of what council has recommended or required, which is that we can only look at the building. I do, I'm very happy that the standards came down, the lights came down to 22. I'm glad that we have this photometric. I, of course, went out to the site. I've been on the Clark's property before. I understand that they can still see those light poles. But it, just to clarify, there's nothing that we can do with regard to the tennis courts, except to condition that the lights be lowered to 22 feet.
And that's as the applicant has requested. It, most, you could ask that the applicant ensure that the light on the top of the 22-foot light standard is shaped such that the light doesn't fall on the, fall on any adjacent property.
Doesn't that, isn't that part of the dark sky ordinance?
My understanding is exactly, that's already built into the requirements.
Okay. So is that a requirement, or is that within our purview? Or is, is that something the commission needs to require?
It's ordinance right now. It is.
It is. I mean, it's automatically, because it said something in our, one of our previous reports that I thought we had to actually, because the, that we had to actually, because it was approved not, when the dark sky ordinance was not yet in effect, that we had to require that.
They're subject to the, they're not vested outside the dark sky ordinance, so they haven't pulled a building permit.
With regard to the dark sky ordinance, because they've sought to modify the light standards, the dark sky ordinance thus applies.
And I think when we were talking about it previously, we were looking at all the lights on the site, if I remember, but it's been a while. And so I think any light that they're modifying, the ordinance has requirements in it for modifying. Anything that comes off a building and then subsequently goes back on has to meet it. So for instance, you know, some of the projects we've been out at late, like the Ojai Valley School, has theirs all meet dark sky. So, you know, it's, you're able to keep what's grandfathered on your building, but if it comes after in remodeling, or it's all dark sky compliant now.
Okay. Thank you. So given that we cannot weigh in on noise and we cannot weigh in any further on the tennis courts, it's my opinion that we should condition specifically that this project go forward with the conditions that everything that was previously approved be in place but for the exact changes that are in the matrix, those changes to the table, so that if there is something that didn't end up from one drawing to the next, that we're not caught out because we've, because something didn't make it from one drawing to the next. Can we, can we condition it that way?
That's my understanding, that's why we went over it with the architect, exactly. So everyone was on the same page, exactly what modifications. Since it's so critical, you can only talk to those things that are being modified. It was crucial that the applicant and his architect walk you through exactly what they're asking to be modified, so you knew what conditions you could place on. And I think based on, I asked him, those in Table 1, the light standards from 35 to 22, the elimination of the fieldhouse, and the additions of the common room, and then he said yes. So as far as I know, that is the sum total, and that is what you can condition. I would just like to say, too, there was a question asked about the 10 o'clock time for turning off lights, and in their mitigations, their initial study, the mitigations that came out of their initial study, there, it is in there. And so that continues to be a condition that is rolling over, that they be turned off at 10.
And then what about adding, so I would then suggest that we'd add one more condition, if there's any other changes, substantial changes to this project, and I guess we would be the arbiters of what's substantial, that they would be required to start over.
With a new design review?
With a new design review permit.
I would caution against that on the basis that that's outside the power of this commission, because the code, the code provides that a modification can be sought via a DRP modification process, and, but doesn't draw a distinction between substantial modifications and not substantial modifications, and doesn't thus require that a, that a substantial modification be brought back as a new, a new permit. At present, the code allows... At present, the code allows them to apply for a modification.
So, under no circumstances, we could say, this, this has just gotten too convoluted, we need to start over?
Nope. The, they're allowed, in other words, if they came in with a proposal that modifies existing design but maintains the land use, then that's merely a modification, because they, and that's, that's evident tonight in the fact that they've only applied for modification to the designer view permit, and not to the CUP, because the use stays the same. They're just changing the building around. If they come in with a, anything that is, modifies the design, then they are, that can be processed as a DRP revision and not as a new permit. If they came in, wiped it out and started completely new, we could treat that as a new permit. But if it's any kind of modification, whether substantial or not, under the current code, it's not treated as a new permit. I'll note that some other cities do take that approach, and that might be something to consider in the future, and as a code amendment, would be to allow for, and sometimes it's viewed as, the planning commission makes the decision as to what's substantial or not, other times it'll be the community development director that will make that determination, with minor modifications being approved by staff, and substantial modifications being approved by the commission.
So, if we wanted to do something like that for phased projects in the future, what would be the, how would we begin that process?
I would suggest a two-pronged approach. One would be, first, on any given phased project, building into the original conditions of approval, a phasing process, that wasn't done in this project in 2011. And that would build in hard requirements as to what is phase one, what is phase two, what is phase three, timeline requirements, and procedures governing modification to the design from phase one to phase two, and phase two to phase three. That'd be on a project-specific basis, that we could do even under the current code, if they brought, came in and asked for a phased project. And two, would be modifying the code to provide that a substantial modification to a designer view permit would require planning commission approval, and a minor mod would require CDD approval, and then setting the decision between those two points, either by the CDD or the planning commission as desired by the council.
Could that apply to anything that hasn't received entitlements, anything that's just been through concept review? Is that only for things that haven't ever come before the planning commission?
That modification would work for anything that wasn't yet vested, so if they had merely had a concept review but hadn't got their permits in hand and hadn't exercised the permits, I would argue that the, that modification would then apply to the, to those projects.
Well, just to have, continue our discussion here, and I believe I read in the conditions that the landscape plan will continue from the first approval, so there's not any changes to that. But I'm, I'm just going to make a comment, this isn't going to, this is not a condition of approval, because I realize we couldn't, can't do this, maybe just a consideration for the applicant, that you may want to consider looking at your perimeter screening where the tennis courts are, maybe, maybe you decide to put a wall in, maybe plant material that could buffer some of the sound, and possibly the effects of the lighting. I real, that's not a condition, that's just a comment that I'm making, nothing that you have to do. I did have initially a consideration about the parking, and I know you have agreements from local businesses, I just thought they were a little vague, you know, not sure, you know, if they were, if the property sold, how would that go in perpetuity? But I do know in the present conditions, there is a parking, I can't remember the exact number what, that it is, but accommodations, so that every time you do have an event or a tournament, you will have to come in and actually show what that parking's going to be. So I feel like it will be handled, even if somebody moved, you may have to go look somewhere else and figure out that parking, but that, that is a condition, and so I think that would, that's good. And I do appreciate the lowering of the lighting, and I'm, I'm okay with the, the building modification, so that's just kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Commissioner Lojowski?
I'm, I'm curious as to what, what observations you have.
Okay. Well, I, it's, with, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Nolan, I think, on a couple of these points, and I would appeal to the applicant as a, as a good neighbor, to consider a screen wall on Pope Lane. That could be as simple as a chain link fence with plant material vines that would help buffer sound and also the view. And I'm just curious to know if we could go to eight foot, would code allow us to go to eight foot height with that, you know, adjacent to side, to Pope Lane there, to obscure view, as well as, you know, with plant material, I see it as beneficiary to, you know, mitigating some of the noise.
The general rule for a fence in the side yard is six feet.
It is.
The applicant could certainly seek a variance if desired, or else seek to accomplish a taller screening with landscaping, as opposed to a masonry wall.
Okay. In this particular zone district, the setbacks are set by you, the commission, and he would then be modifying and asking you, and then it, you know, we're getting in this circular, do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, I'm saying that you're not going to condition him, but then if you ask him to do that, it's a modification of, exactly.
Is it not something we could address this evening?
Well, I believe you're within your rights to ask the applicant if he voluntarily would accept that, but other than that, I believe that's all he can do, correct?
If, if the applicant would like to, he could certainly, a wall could be approved, but we can't require him to put a wall in.
Right, right. And, you know, the whole idea and intent of this, Mr. Wall, is a spirit of cooperation. Okay? And I think you very well understand what that's all about, and I would recommend that, that exact thing, that we look at, maybe better addressed by our landscape architect on board here, but what I'm visualizing is a, as it is now, I believe there, I don't even know if there is a, a fence going along that property line, is there? Let's start there. Is there a chain link fence currently going up, parallel to Pope Lane?
Yes.
We can see it there.
Okay.
The horses.
Yeah, we'll give you, you bet. I want to, let's get clarification first.
There is a fence currently somewhere in here that goes all along, it's also got screen.
Right. So I think it's a six foot or five foot fence?
Five and a half, six feet. Tennis courts, generally the standard tennis court is built with 10 foot, 10 feet, so that's what we plan to have at the back.
Around the backside of the tennis courts themselves.
Pretty high.
Right.
And with screen.
Does that mitigate sound?
Right.
And you could actually buffer that with plant material that gets even taller than the 10 feet.
I have to just see.
Yeah, I guess so.
A wall, I, I can't model, generally a real wall, I don't, cost is scary.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about a, a chain link fence with, with, with plant, plant life, you know, with, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can't, she was saying the code discourages the chain links, so.
Right. But as a, as a screen, I, we, I, the screen wall idea is a, is a general term.
And any landscape or wall would have to, he would have to apply for a new DRP, because it's, it's in a zone that is subject to.
Well, you know, maybe, maybe a next step would be to look at your previous landscape plan, and it may already be handled on there. We just don't have it here in our packet.
There are trees there, there's actually trees planted along, I don't, I don't have a.
So we're just making a suggestion, but it may already be handled on the plan.
Maybe at the very least, it's just a matter of planting, you know, vines along the existing chain link fence.
Well, he can't, if he makes any changes aside from that original plan, then it starts the whole process again. So what my suggestion would be, because we don't have it in front of us, look at the plan that was approved, and it may already be handled on there, we just don't have it in front to compare it. And then at that point, well, then a decision could be made.
This is a fence, because they have to walk, people are going, just walking into the club, because it's a private club, and it's, we're just adjacent to that, so we have to fence all along, later on, all the way up here. And then, then the fence.
Oh, then it picks up the court, fencing, okay.
10 foot fences with dark screen.
Right, and then probably planting.
It takes a lot of the light, you know, the local office.
Okay.
It could be neighborly.
It's, it's, yeah, so just trying to find common ground here. The parking agreement, I, I see an issue there, the way, when I was looking at the three letters there, there was disparity from one parking lot to the other. What I'd like to see there is condition that, first of all, that, that each agreement is in perpetuity, in other words, it transfers with the ownership of the property. If someone at the BST sells their property next year, all of a sudden you're out 80 spaces, it doesn't work, in terms of the way it was presented to us tonight. So I would like to see those agreements rewritten to, to include the clause that it is in perpetuity.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, sorry, but they haven't, I'm not sure that we can require that the agreements be made in perpetuity, because again, they have, they haven't sought to change that aspect. All they've done is, is move the building, thus reducing the amount of parking. But I, we're trying to find the condition that should provide some solace on the parking agreements.
But didn't, the parking did change.
They added parking spaces.
On-site parking spaces, which would reduce the need for off-site parking demand, which raises the concern that they haven't sought to increase the reliance on off-site, off-site, off-site parking, so it should leave it the same, but.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
As much as I think that's a good idea, I think that it's going to be awfully difficult to get any landowner to agree to do anything that runs with the land, that, you know, he's going to have to get three other landowners to agree to devalue their property by making an agreement that others are going to have to, I mean, I think that's going to be tough. I think it's going to be tough.
Well, I respect your opinion as a, as a Realtor, I have to.
I think, I think deferring to the fact that they do have to submit a parking plan for the project, I mean, that, I think that's.
That might give us the.
Right. It's this one.
And the other condition I was looking for is on page 11 and 22, Exhibit A of the resolution, number 12, that requires, it goes on to page 11 to page 12, condition number 12, it requires that the agreements be approved by the city, in addition to, and so I, again, I think that provides.
So I guess there is a backup.
And additionally, another point I wanted to note on this particular issue is that if the off-site sites that they have parking agreements with are sold tomorrow, or the day after they finalize their project, then if they don't replace that parking, they're then outside their conditions with regard to their parking access, and they'd be outside the confines of the, of the approval with regard to the SEQA analysis. So that's another way, instead of requiring a, an agreement of perpetuity upfront, which would amount to forcing the applicant to buy an easement from the other property owners, we have it on the backend. He has to replace it somehow, some way, and puts the onus on him, and if he didn't, then that would be a matter which the city could pursue in code enforcement.
All right.
As a violation of the conditions.
All right. Okay, I'm done.
I'd like to just make a comment for the record. I understand the applicant is going to contest or protest the public art requirement. I'd just like to make a statement for the city council. I just want to briefly read that the City of Ojai Public Arts Program, in 2003, the city council of Ojai enacted ordinance number 765, creating the public arts program. The program seeks to enrich the cultural life of Ojai and hence its village environment, document the rich artistic history of the Ojai Valley, and complement its compelling natural surroundings. The public arts program requires that public art be included as part of the private and public development projects within the city. It represents a partnership between the city, developers, and the arts community. The program increases the appreciation, understanding, and enjoyment of art by residents and visitors alike, and adds to the economic vitality of the city. Public art also encourages artistic cooperation among various disciplines by placing artwork within public spaces. Building projects must provide public art equal to 2% of the value of the project. So, the only exemption that city council may grant is if it would be in the public's best interest to do so. I don't see, in any case, how it would be in the public's best interest to exempt it from public art. Just a comment I wanted to make for the record.
Are we ready for a motion? It seems that.
Sorry, I just want to make one more comment, Chair Foster. The one, the one concern I, I have is if we, if this is denied, I mean, those lights could go back up to 35 feet, and I think that that is kind of the one ray of light in all of this, is that they did come down to 22, and I think that that is a big deal in terms of ensuring something, and I think it's been at least clarified, whereas it wasn't clear before at all exactly what was happening. So I think that that's a big benefit, and I'm glad for that, so.
Okay. I'd like to make one more point. I think this time, I'd like to thank the applicant, as far as I think you made a much more concerted effort. I, it was much clearer, you obviously did a lot of homework, you reached out to your neighbors for better or worse. I do appreciate the effort you put into this. I think this goes back to the beginning of the project, I just think it's a lesson that to really get cost estimates along the way, I think everybody should do that, but I do appreciate the effort that you've put into it since the last time you were before the commission. I, I'm in favor of approving with the modifications as we've, as outlined in Exhibit A. Well, I, I don't know if, well, no, I'm not making a motion yet, I'm just, just getting.
Any further discussion? So the only additional condition I'm hearing at this point in time came from Commissioner Zabilla?
Yeah, do you want me to?
You want to go ahead and make a, make a motion then?
So, Mr. Summers and Ms. Wald, you can help me out here, but I'm going to make an, a motion to adopt resolution number 1506, approving DRP 1105, RV02, subject to the conditions of approval contained therein and including that we are approving this project with the architectural changes as provided in matrix, in the matrix, Table 1, that we are also conditioning the lower of, the lowering of the light standards to 22 feet, that we are conditioning that we are, there's only the elimination of the fieldhouse and the building commons, and everything else stays the same, oh, sorry, eliminating the fieldhouse and building the commons, and everything else stays the same as previously approved.
I think you need to add into there, and the parking changes that increase the number of parking.
And the parking changes that increase the number of parking to, how many? Do we need to specify total?
No, just.
Okay. And the parking, and the parking changes, right, okay, the parking changes that increase the number of spaces.
Something I would add, to the end, a number of parking pieces onsite, and also, as depicted in the approved plans on file in the community development department.
Okay. Anything else?
All right, I'll second the motion.
Further discussion on the matter? Rule call.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Lojowski?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wall? Our next item on the, this evening's agenda is an ordinance amendment to modify the City of Ojai's municipal code, section 10 dash 2.604, table 2.7, special purpose district general development standards and section 10 dash 2.803, height measurement and exceptions, text amendment 15 dash 01, hear from staff. Hear from staff.
I'm going to go ahead and have Diane Gould give that report.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, members of the public. In January of 2015, the City Council directed staff to review height limits and provide suggested text amendments for consideration. In light of that direction to staff, the staff has come before you tonight with a couple of modifications that I'll read for you, so I can read those into the record. Number one, establishing a height limit of 30 feet and a maximum of two stories in the public lands zoning district, and to allow architectural features including antenna supports not over three inches in diameter, chimneys, clock towers, cupolas, masts, poles, steeples, and other similar structures to exceed the height limit by 10 feet. You'll note that currently in Table 2.7 of the Municipal Code, the height standards are to be determined by the Planning Commission through the development review process. The other change that staff is recommending is that in addition, the project proposes to amend Section 10-2.803, Subsection D1A, for all zoning districts as follows. And it's included in a strikeout text for you. And basically, it's striking out, allowing up to 15 feet for these architectural appurtenances if the structure is located mid block, at a street intersection, and adding up to 10 feet if it's located mid-block. So the mid-block would actually then, mid-block and street intersections would be allowed to have only an increase of 10 feet. And there are a couple of reasons for establishing a hard height limit, which are provided for you in the staff report, but I will read them for you. And that is to provide consistency with other districts already identified in the zoning code for the City of Ojai. It also provides clarity to the applicants in terms of what height limits are allowed. And lastly, to provide a gap, to close the gap in the zoning code where there's clear, where currently there is discretion by the Planning Commission. And really, this is ideally designed to help the applicants clearly know what is allowed and what isn't allowed. Staff did prepare an initial study and a negative declaration, which is included as an attachment to your staff report. The statute for that ran, for that initial study for public comments ran today. Staff has not received any comments on this document. So it's staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing and then make a recommendation that this move forward to the City Council for final approval. That concludes my staff report. I'd be glad to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, and this is on the strikeout. I just want to make sure that I understood this correctly. So if you're striking out up to 15 feet if located at a street intersection on the item right below it, which would be A, it says up to 10 feet if located mid-block. Would you strike the located mid-block? Is it just 10 feet across the board?
10, 10 feet across the board.
Okay, so that's, so that would be a strikeout then.
I just want to clarify that because there seems to be discrepancy in the initial study that was circulated. It says may exceed the height limit by up to 10 feet. So what it should, there shouldn't be an A. There should be a strikeout of the colon.
Right.
Then the A, and it should just say up to 10 feet, and then strikeout if located in mid-block. If you look at, if you look at page four of 39 on the initial study, it has the correct language, which is, it's been modified to just say may exceed the height limit by up to 10 feet.
Okay, good. Just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions for staff? This is a public hearing, so we'd like to, if anyone would like to address this issue, they're welcome to come up now. I don't see anybody from the public coming forward. Mr. Ulrich.
William Ulrich, just a question of clarification. Could the, the exceeding the height limit by 10 feet permit light towers to be, to be 40 feet high by this text amendment?
I believe that's the case. Does the staff want to address that?
I'm sorry, what kind of towers?
Light.
Oh, light.
It says masts and poles, and typically speaking, lights can be attached to the top of masts and poles.
Oh, I see.
And also, including antenna supports not over three inches in diameter. An antenna support, and this is a, is a term of art, is the central pole, if you will, that would support an antenna. But if you get up that high, 40 feet, with a three-inch pole, you have to have guy supports going out. So that's a much larger structure. So from a practical perspective, my question is whether this text amendment is clear enough to notice the public and an applicant of what they can do, what's permissible, and also from the perspective of the city of what is, and the Planning Commission, what is not permissible, and how to address it in a cogent way.
Now, did you specifically question the use of lighting?
Masts and poles. Well, my question is can a light, a light head be attached to the top of the 10-foot exceeding, 10-foot extension? That makes it at 40 feet. Or cut it down at eight feet and a two-foot light head?
Correct.
That's 40 feet. Does this, in effect, permit a 40-foot light tower?
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think that it prohibits someone. It doesn't speak to lighting on this. This is taking language as it exists in the code today and modifying it down from 15 feet to 10 feet, and reducing, the other added part of it was adding on the three-foot inches to, you know, to neck it down to what, how big it could be. But if the commission feels that there needs to be something, you know, additionally added onto that to make sure that, that, that doesn't then result in someone, you know, putting a light up there, then I think we can entertain that. It just was not something considered. We were, we were dealing specifically with height issues.
Right.
And restricting height, not adding additional restrictions via lighting or any of those other issues.
Well, we can certainly condition that the light would not be allowed. And I think it was a good point brought up about a pole of that stature at that height could very well require guy, guy wire lines. We should probably address that, and I would, I would suggest that they would not be allowed.
One point I wanted to add is that these are, the antenna supports, masts, poles, et cetera, are all modifying architectural features. They're listed as examples of architectural features, not as freestanding poles, nor freestanding masts and towers, nor freestanding antennas.
Okay.
The focus of this exemption is to allow, and this, this again is language is presently in the code. We're just modifying the height aspects. But it's worth having this discussion, certainly. The, this language is, I read it, is intended to allow things on top of a building to be taller than the otherwise strict, than the other, otherwise existing height limit, not to allow a freestanding light tower or a freestanding pole or mast or antenna or anything like that.
I see what you're saying. But could it be interpreted that way and, and by an applicant and, and point to this code? I mean, there's an argument to be made there that...
The argument could be made. Maybe one way to resolve this would be to add before, between structures and made, to add not including any freestanding mast, pole, or tower.
Chair Foster, can I ask a question?
Commissioners, Zabella.
So what about, and then how would we address the fact that, you know, cell towers want to get stuck on the side of existing structures?
So under this provision, a cell tower on the side of a structure would be limited to 30 feet, but they can get another 10 if the addition was less than three inches in diameter. Keeping in mind that most cell antennas are more than three inches in diameter. The supports may well be less than three, but your typical cell antenna is fair amount larger. They're usually about yay-ish, the antenna itself, and there's always in sets of three. So I wouldn't read this to allow that 10-foot additional height to include a cell tower standing, or a cell antenna standing on its own on top of a building. The caveats, of course, being that if they came in, if it was already approved at the max height, and they come in under 6649 for a minor modification that exceeds, then they're allowed to add, add height. And that's under that federal exemption that we're all familiar with. Additionally, theoretically, you could have one where they hid a cell, hid cell antennas inside a cupola or inside a, as is often seen, inside a bell tower or a clock tower or a steeple, where it wouldn't be visible. That would, then I think they could do it where it would be, the cell antennas would be above the 10 feet, up to 40 feet, if they're inside the, the steeple or the cupola.
Well, on what basis? On what basis would that, would they be constrained by being inside a cupola or something like that? I mean, it doesn't...
In other words, it allows cupolas as the height limit. And so there's nothing prohibiting them from having antennas inside a cupola. But, but an antenna without a cupola, if it's greater than three inches in diameter, wouldn't be able to take advantage of this exemption.
Commissioner Lojaskey.
I mean, I'm, forgive my ignorance, but what is, what is the point of this? Like, what, how come City Council asks us to do it? I mean, like, just real basic, what, how come this...
Broad, certainly. The broad goal is to fill a current hole in the code. Right now, the code has hard height limits for all zones except the PL zone. And under, as a result of that, anyone who comes in to build anything in the PL zone, there's no hard height limit that they would be subject to. And so they, instead, the limit is set by the commission. But that doesn't do us any good if someone comes in for a project that's exempt from any discretionary review under applicable state or federal law. If they come in under that type of a project where it's that, certain projects that have discretionary review, they would then be able to build a tall, effectively, there'd be no hard height limit we can impose on them because we wouldn't have the ability to impose discretionary review. Instead, we'd be, we would be stuck with the lack of a height limit. So adding a height limit that's hard without any discretionary review necessary to set it solves that problem, filling that hole in the code.
But does that just put us in the realm of, like, additional burdensome regulation? Or does this somehow protect the city? I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to work, I mean, I know this, I don't know if I'm making sense.
Okay, so it's like Matt said, we're trying to get a limit. So the idea of how they weave together, you worked on the wireless ordinance, and the wireless ordinance, they were very clear when the attorneys were here that you can't put these things in the wireless ordinance to only be applicable to cell towers, correct? So the idea is this is a basic regulation that had a hole in it. This was brought up by the public during the public hearings that, so the idea is to look, you got it?
The light bulb just went off.
Yeah, cool, cool. Thanks.
The gap is filled.
Mr. Summers, you had just mentioned if we wanted to add something about light fixtures or lamps, and you inserted it somewhere in that wording, but I missed where you did that. This is probably about five minutes ago.
Certainly. Let me write down what I had, my idea, and then I'll read it as a sentence.
Okay.
So it would then read, "Architectural features, including antenna supports not over three inches in diameter, chimneys, clock towers, cupolas, masts, poles, steeples, and similar structures, but not including," and this is the addition, "but not including freestanding light poles, masts, or antennas." And then it continues on as, as proposed, "may exceed the height limit by up to 10 feet."
No, the trick would be a pole on top of the building versus the freestanding. Oh, you mean, is there daylight between mast and pole? Right now, the three inches is only applied to antenna supports.
Are we clear, Harris? Okay. Yeah, let's, let's move forward with the, wait for staff to finish their discussion.
Sorry about that. We were just resolving an existing...
Nothing to add? Nothing to add? Okay.
Potential ambiguity, but we think we're all right. The, the question being, what would the type of a pole that this permit would be? And the logical one is a flagpole on the top of the building.
Especially the fact that we're adding that we're not including freestanding poles as part of the language, correct? Yeah?
That's true.
Okay. So we're ready for a, a motion here.
All right. I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 15 dash... Do we have a number on that? Okay, we don't need that. Okay, recommending that the City Council adopt proposed Zone Text Amendment TA 15-01 and the accompanying initial study and negative declaration Exhibit A.
As amended.
Oh. Where did I, did I miss that? Are you saying for me to add?
Add, add it after the resolution. The resolution as amended.
Right. And do you, do I need to read that, or do we have that written down? Okay, great. Go ahead.
And that amendment is in Section 2 of the resolution, Subsection 2D1 would now read, "Architectural features, including antenna supports not over three inches in diameter, chimneys, clock towers, cupolas, masts, poles, steeples, and similar structures, but not including freestanding lights, poles, masts, or antennas, may exceed the height limit by up to 10 feet."
Okay. Let's see, do I need to read, let's see, finish reading this? Okay, where I left off was which amends the cities. Do I need to say the rest of this or not? I think we're good.
Understood.
Understood? Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Rule call.
Zabella?
Yep.
Nolan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Lojaskey?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Next. We have before us a concept review, CR 14-05, for a new one-story 60-bed replacement skilled nursing facility and related site work at Ojai Community Memorial Hospital, located at 1306 Maricopa Highway, APN 019-0-110-335 and -345. Hear from staff, please.
Well, I think because of the lateness of the hour, we can, I can ask Diana to please give a really brief staff report and let, allow the applicant to come up and kind of engage ourselves into the nuts and bolts. Thank you.
That's, that's exactly what I'm going to do. I'll just summarize very quickly for you. The applicant has a project team here, and they have a detailed presentation they'd like to go through for you. But briefly, the concept review that you have before you tonight is really just that. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to provide information to the applicant about what sorts of things they like about the project, things that they'd like to see included in the project. And the applicant is planning to move forward with a develop, a design review permit and several other entitlements, including a lot line adjustment, because if you had a chance to look at the plans, you'll notice that the building that's proposed crosses over two lots, so the applicant would need to move forward with that type of an entitlement as well, keeping in mind that there are lot size restrictions. Therefore, if, if the resultant lots don't meet those requirements, then the applicant would need to apply for a variance as well. So as you're considering what the applicant is presenting to you, there are a couple of things that you would want to look at, and they're enumerated for you on page three of your staff report. But in summary, we're asking you to take a look at the context of the new structures that are being requested, the continuity in terms of how the buildings are set back from the street, how they work with the current buildings that are on the lot, the scale of the buildings, and how they fit in with the existing lot, and are, and also the architectural design. There are a number of development standards that are shown in the staff report. I won't go over all of those for you. The applicant is also proposing additional parking spaces, and the applicant will also talk you through the transition from closing the existing facility and opening the new facility, and how that will kind of move forward. So with that, that concludes my staff report because I did want to keep it brief, and because the applicant has a team here that's prepared to answer any of your questions. But I'll be glad to answer any questions at this point.
Sounds good. Should we move on? Listen to the, our applicant's presentation? Oh, oh, yes. We do have to open... Yeah, it's not a... It's good to know we're not the only ones. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners, staff, members of the public. My name is Hadi Lashkari. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer at the Ojai Valley Community Hospital. I have the honor tonight to give a brief introduction of our project team tonight that's here and share a little bit of... and share a little bit of, I think, background about the hospital that I think is very pertinent in terms of the direction that we have headed and that we are heading. The Ojai Valley Community Hospital and its skilled nursing facility have over a 50-year history here in the valley. And as many of you know, in 2001, thanks to a group of Ojai citizens and community leaders that came together and with the loan of the Ojai Valley Bank, that we were able to purchase the Ojai Valley Community Hospital and for the first time in its history, convert the hospital to a not-for-profit status. And since then, this year actually marks the 10-year anniversary of the merger between Community Memorial Hospital and Ojai Valley Community Hospital and the formation of the Community Memorial Health System. In this time and in this short period, we've gone from a one-room ER, quite literally, emergency room, to a six-bed emergency department. We've seen a lot of improvements that have gone on. We've established a hospitals program. And this last year, we actually got what's known as Critical Access Hospital designation by CMS, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Studies. This designation exemplifies what many of the residents... For us that live in the valley, what really... The hospital means. And that's the criticality of the hospital to residents of the valley. Four years ago, we embarked to develop a facility master plan that would modernize our campus. The first phase of the project required retrofitting of equipment to achieve current seismic compliance requirements for the acute care hospital. Much of that was done kind of quietly. As part of that process, we addressed a lot of the deferred maintenance from many of the previous owners. We put a new roof on the acute care hospital. We replaced heating, ventilation, air conditioning units. And we remodeled the ICU. And for the most part, it was kind of a frustrating phase for us because a lot of the work and hard work that was put in to kind of that... The foundation of keeping the hospital open went really unseen to the public. The second phase of the project, we came in 2013 to the planning commission for Phase Two of our project. It was the... Essentially, it was addressing the handicap accessibility. It's kind of ironic and unfortunate to say that an acute care hospital at the time wasn't meeting the handicap needs of the community. And so, we came to the commission and introduced our front entrance remodel and renovation project. And we're very happy today that that work has been complete. Tonight, our team is excited to be here to present the replacement project for the Ojai Valley Community Hospital Skilled Nursing Facility, also known as the Continuing Care Center. As many of you are aware, we currently have a 66-bed skilled nursing facility that's just behind the acute care hospital on our campus. It's a distinct-part skilled nursing facility. What that means is, as a distinct part, it actually falls on the hospital license. And it's very unique to have a skilled nursing facility that's on the acute care license. And we're fortunate that we provide care to both long-term residents that live in the skilled nursing facility, but also short-term rehab for patients that need rehab, maybe post-acute care rehab, coming in and might have a couple-week length of stay in our skilled nursing facility. While the hospital, the acute care hospital, typically might have a single-digit census, average daily census, the skilled nursing facility actually runs quite full. We're at 55 today. And that's actually considered low. We're typically in the high 50s, 58, 59, 60. And so, I think it's very fair to say that we run quite full. And while we run quite full, we provide excellent care to our patients. We have caring and compassionate staff. We have modern lift equipment, electronic health records, computers on wheels, Pyxis medication and supply machines, and bedside medication reconciliation systems. And I think... I say that because it might not mean much to the commission, but really what it means is that we're offering modern... Essentially, modern medicine in a very old building. And many of this technology came from our hospital system. And it's typically what's used in a higher acuity level of care. But we're fortunate, again, because of our affiliation, to be able to provide this in our skilled nursing facility. And in some instances... And I'll just start by saying, all of this equipment, most all of this equipment didn't even exist when the hospital was built. The skilled nursing facility was built many years ago. And so, in some instances, doors have been removed on closets to try to retrofit new technologies into an old building. And I think that the team has done a pretty good job up until now to kind of keep introducing this. And so, let me repeat. The building is old. The existing building's old. The heating, ventilation, air conditioning in our existing building doesn't meet the needs of our patients and staff. The rooms are small. We have up to three patients in a single room. And in some instances, we have six patients that are sharing a toilet room. So we have two triple rooms that are kind of adjoined by a small toilet room. If you're in one of our beds, in the center bed, and you have long arms like me, you could probably reach out and touch arms with a patient next to you. I started by saying that four years ago, we embarked to develop a facility master plan. In that plan, we originally hoped to renovate and remodel the existing skilled nursing facility, like our acute care hospital, like we've done there today. However, with meetings with the staff, the medical staff, a number of community focus groups, it quickly became apparent that we could easily spend $3 to $4 million and really not get to the root of what we need to establish in terms of what our patients want and deserve here in the valley. With the support of our board of trustees, and I'll add that as a not-for-profit hospital, we have a volunteer board, all volunteers, that represent and look out for the best interests of the community. We were supported to begin to explore a replacement facility for our skilled nursing facility. And so, with the support of our community, our foundation, generous donors, we think we can deliver what'll arguably be one of the finest skilled nursing facilities in the county. We figure you get to do something like this once every 50 years, so we have to do it right. Early on, as we went through this process, I think we really put together a very all-star team. We... I spent considerable amount of time looking. When you embark in this process, the fear is that the cost of the project is going to get to a point where it's not attainable. And so, we wanted to put in an all-star team. We looked at design-build. We weren't really crazy about it, but we knew it would keep us more affordable if we went down that direction. And then, we embarked and worked with the Stahl Companies, a healthcare construction project management firm that we're working closely with in Ventura. And we came up with an idea of integrated project delivery. And that was kind of putting together an all-star team that would design what we think would be a very modern building and that would meet the needs of our community, but it could really be at a price point in which we could afford. And so, we brought in HGA Architects, a very reputable healthcare firm. Joey Creglins, the principal architect for HGA. And comes with years of experience in building skilled nursing facilities and acute care hospitals. We brought in Rasmussen and Associates, arguably, I'd say, one of the best local architects that we've worked with. They have a lot of healthcare background. They've done a number of projects here in the Ojai Valley as well. They were involved with our acute care remodel. They built our cancer center in Ventura. A number of projects on the Thomas Aquinas College as well. And we think really understands the Ojai vernacular. And then, we brought in Steve McGilvery, a local contractor. Again, local builder, did Libby Bowle, built our cancer project, our emergency department, our cancer center in Ventura, our emergency department in Ojai, our front entrance remodel. And we really began to kind of formulate what we think it was going to be a great design for the community. And all along the way, cost estimated to ensure that it's within reach because I think that's the key point here as we move forward. So what you're going to see tonight is far from a concept review, in my opinion. The building has evolved in various shapes and sizes from the time that we embarked a number of years ago and kind of shaped it. And we can share some of those thoughts as we go through the drawings. And we've had multiple community meetings, focus groups, including a presentation we gave to the public at Soul Park in November. We've had a couple of meetings with neighboring homeowners associations, the Hitching Post and Creekside, some of which the neighbors are here. And I'm very grateful for that as well. And we feel a lot of thought's been put in to ensure that we're good neighbors. That's really important to us as a community hospital. And we also believe that those discussions need to continue. There's been some really important points that have been brought up even as of Monday, when we met with the Creekside, that really deal with a lot of the mitigation as we go through the process. Lighting, the driveway that's being introduced, rodent control during, you know, during the grading period as we do that. And we feel a lot of that really needs to be addressed. We also aspire to be lead or leadership in energy and environmental design building in the Ojai Valley. I understand it'll be the first lead building, if I'm correct. And it's something that we really hope we can achieve. It'll be a feather in the community's hat, I think, to be able to achieve that. So just before I hand it over, I ask, as Mr. Creglins and Mr. Boytzen come up and really introduce our project, that as commissioners and public, as you look at this, keep in one big thing in mind. And that's hospitals and healthcare facilities are inherently designed from the inside out. And that's with the patient in mind. So we want this place to reflect the community it serves and to be a place of comfort and healing. And so, without further ado, I'll pass it over to Joey, and we'll get into the presentation.
Thank you. Do we have the digital version perhaps? Or... I mean, I'm happy to run through it based on... This is probably helpful, even though I think the commissioners have the package. Public, it would be very nice. I do.
Is it... Do we have permission to...
Well, we do have the plans in front of us, so... What was that, Mr. Sommers?
The chair could waive the 25-hour requirement if he wished.
Yeah, I'll waive that requirement if we can get a visual on the screen.
I think it would be helpful. Thank you. Yeah, we did. It was... It'll match... We see in that lower right-hand corner where the red arrows are, the actual grading and excavation work that was going on for those entries and improvements that Hadi mentioned was the last time, I think, he visited the commission. The... On the right side, Maricopa Highway, the primary access to the hospital. As you come onto the site, the first white building that you see is the existing hospital built in the 1960s. And it currently is licensed for 25 beds as a critical access facility going forward. And then, on the sort of the lower driveway, you see that really is the primary access as you come onto the site to the care center that's located... That's the next building, kind of in the center of the site, by the middle red arrow there. And we'll reference those photos here shortly. That is the existing 66-bed facility. It's about 18,000 square feet. And as Hadi said, we'll see a plan a little bit later. Mostly two and three-bedroom patient rooms, sharing toilets and other accommodations. And so, we're going to be modernizing those into only semi-private rooms and then 10% private rooms as a new mix going forward. Continuing towards the left on the site, it starts to move uphill a little bit. So you can see those black grade lines that go up. It does move up a fair amount as it goes up to Kiama Road on the far north side of the site. Currently, there's no access on that side. We are going to be proposing a drive for a variety of reasons, so we'll get into that. The next series of slides, I think we have four slides with the site plan. We're going to start with existing. And then, we have the proposed site plan. And then, we have a couple of phasing diagrams to talk about how we're going to manage maintaining the existing operations of the existing facility, yet build the new as we go forward. The... In the center, on the center of the screen, on the top of the site, there's a third building there, which is a sort of a facilities or a support building. It's about a little over 2,000 square feet. And you can see a parking lot immediately adjacent, which is largely staff parking at this time. The... I'll work again, right to left. The first photo you see on the right-hand side is actually the main entry drive to the campus. If you look all the way back to the trees in the middle of the drive aisle, that's actually the front door of the existing skilled nursing facility. The next photo is right about where we're proposing the driveway. The, the next photo is right about where we're proposing the driveway at Kiama Road on the, on the, sort of the north westerly side of the site. And then, the third image is actually a picture of the, of the recently completed exterior renovations. And then the fourth and, and final slide is, is the red arrow in the middle is, is the view looking at the large portion of the site that really is the development area for the replacement facility. So, it's looking at the, sort of the available space that we have. And what you can see is there are some, there are some existing, actually, there's quite a few existing oak trees as you can see from the aerial. In the middle of the site where you see the grouping of, it's probably 18 to 20 trees, we will have to navigate and mitigate those as part of the solution. But I'll talk a little bit about that a little more with some of the landscape strategies. So, the, the existing site plan, not, not much different than, than the overlay. Couple of, a couple of key points here. It's three parcels, two long parcels where you, at the top of the screen, those two parcels are stacked on top of one another, and then the hospital itself is on a, is on a single parcel. So, as part of the package, we, we went through and done the analysis in terms of the maximum development area. Currently, we're running about 61,000 square feet on those parcels. There's a little over 40,000 square feet in the existing hospital on the right side, which is two stories. The single-story building is just a little over 18,000 square feet plus the 2,000 for the support building, that gives us 61,000. The, the maximum allowable floor area that we calculated for the development is somewhere in the neighborhood of just a little over 86,000 square feet, so it's currently under. And when we go to the next slide, what we'll demonstrate is that the, the proposed replacement is still under that, under that limit, although we're getting a little closer. Talking about parking, the existing campus has 100, a total of 135 parking stalls, 100 and, I think 103 of those are onsite and 30 of those are offsite. And that includes 124 stalls plus nine accessible stalls. As we go through the phasing, none of the, none of the phases have less than that, so we always have more as we go forward. So, at no point in time during the development is there less than what they have today, which is at least one of the goals. Couple of other constraints as you, as we transition to the next slide. So, this is our proposed, proposed site plan. The, the yellow, sort of the yellow building on the, on the left-hand side is the proposed area. The dashed box in the middle is the existing one that we will ultimately remove, and then the existing hospital and support building will remain. A couple of challenges, staff did mention the lot line adjustment that we have to, that we'll have to navigate as part of the process because the building is, pardon me, much bigger, I won't say much bigger than the existing, but it's approximately 33,000 square feet compared to the 18,000 of the existing. That's largely driven by not so much an increase in either function. In fact, we're actually six beds less than the facility is now, but each room has its own toilet and shower. And the, the code amenities within the facility, so whether it be day rooms, dining, activity spaces and other supporting amenities, they're just a little larger these days by current codes. The existing, the existing facility was built in, I think, 1977 or so, so the, the size is largely driven by, you know, new clearances for accessibility and other things related to patient care. The, the two dashed lines in the middle, we do have overhead power lines that run right through the middle of the site. We are meeting with Edison, actually tomorrow. We've had preliminary conversations with them about relocating them. Right where the building and those lines intersect, that's where they have conceptually talked about going from the poles to underground, and we will go around the building on the, on the outer sides. And then eventually, in the corner between the existing hospital and the support building, they will come back up out of ground and go back onto the poles. That's, that's their main transition lines going forward. So, we are in the process of working through, working through those mitigations for the, for the actual site. The, we've talked about the, the goal to put in another entry, a secondary entry to the campus off of, off of Kiama Road on the left side. The, part of the strategy is, is that right now, there's only one entry, entry point to the hospital. That'll still remain the entry point, so from a service perspective, all the, whether it be emergency services, services coming in from, we'll call it trash pickup or supply delivery to the hospital will still come in on those roads. The existing service for the hospital is just on the upper left-hand corner of the hospital. What we're proposing to do with the new facility is, if you go straight across to the, kind of the backside of, of the new building, is where we're proposing the new, we'll say, service loading dock for, for the replacement facility. Currently, it's located closer to the westerly properties, and it's on the backside of the existing facility. So, we're moving it towards the center and it's going to be concealed. We'll, we'll look a little more in the elevations. It's kind of sunk down a little bit. It'll have screen wall, so it'll be a little more concealed than it is now in, in its current configuration. The road does meander a little bit. It's not intended to be a street by any means, it's simply a, a drive access. Part of the strategy there is that if you did have a true emergency on the campus and by chance that, that one entry point was blocked off, we felt it might be beneficial to have that secondary access point if something long-term needed to happen. It does help facilitate circulation on the side a little better is one of the strand, strategies. It does meander a little bit coming down the hill, and there's some existing hospital services at the, on the right side, on the southern end that we have to go around as well. So, it's not a straight shot through, it meanders down the westerly side of the site, and we hope that that can help mitigate any through traffic a little bit, or at least, at least slow it down a little bit. So, it's definitely intended to be a drive. We did put parking, there is some parking in front of the building for that purpose as well, so it's not just a, a through fare. There is some parking proposed in, as part of that entry. So, phase one, a couple of constraints that we have, you'll see the, the yellow diagrams, and when we complete phase one, the goal is, is to build, build a replacement facility, complete that, and, and complete the yellow areas that are shaded, so that would be part of the drive access, some parking stalls, the main, the main drop-off, which is, which is the circular element in the middle of the, middle of the proposed building, and then the access drive that goes around the existing facility. The building's been positioned so that we try to be able to navigate to the backside of that facility because there's existing services back there. So, we needed to make sure we kept that in operation until the new facility is actually licensed and occupiable. So, once it's occupiable from a licensing perspective, the facility will move the patients and staff over into the new one. The idea is to open that up before we tear down and complete the parking lot where the existing facility sits. So, in this scheme, I think we're adding an additional 14 stalls or so as part of that transition. All the existing parking stalls will remain that are on the site now, so that we're not taking any away during that. So, we are increasing that a little bit, and then when we transition to the final phase, we will, we will, of course, fence that off and then complete the construction of the parking lot. And in the end, in terms of transitioning from the 133 stalls that are onsite, I think we end up with a total of 200 and, 202 or 204 stalls when we're, when we're done. The landscape, landscaping concepts, these are just some preliminary ideas that we're working on. I mentioned earlier that where the, where the proposed building sits, there are some existing oak trees, and we are working with the, the arborist to get the final count and going through our tree survey and inventory to do that, but there are some trees that will have to be removed as part of the, as part of the concept, so we'll, we'll be working for strategies to replace those. Largely, it's going to be replaced with other trees in the final landscape concept, so we'd probably be, I think conceptually, we're looking at using cork oaks, valley oaks, coast live oaks as the primary replacement trees on the site. And then we'd be looking at, in terms of some, some strategic points within the courtyards, using some things like a silk tree, crepe myrtles, and even dwarf magnolias as part of some of the courtyard strategies. So, as you come down the road on the westerly side of the site, I think the idea is, is that we do sort of create that tree-lined drive approach similar to the image you saw that exists up on, up on Kiama, in, in terms of sort of an experiential component coming forward, whether you're a pedestrian, whether you are a visitor, patient, even staff. I think the idea is, is as you enter, as you approach the building, you can see that it is staggered a little bit, that we want to create a, a, a variety of courtyards and gardens along, sort of along that journey. So, no matter whether you're a community and visiting, or whether you're a patient, that it sort of creates that sense as you go forward, and it also breaks up the mass of the building. When we look at the floor plan, what you'll see is the, the courtyards between the buildings, all the patient rooms actually look into the courtyards or out to a courtyard, they actually don't face the street. So, adds a little bit of privacy to those courts and also the environmental enhancement for the, for the patients and residents of the facility, and then those gardens actually continue around, around the site. The far, the far left side maintains as many of those oak trees as we can up the hill and not, and not impact those. So, we, we place the building just, just far enough to, to the left to avoid the existing building, but yet we couldn't go too far because that, there's an extreme slope. So, you will see there is a, a short retaining wall that's on the far left side of the building. It'll be somewhere in between four feet and eight feet as it goes back just to manage that earth, but we, we've also planned some courtyards along that way, both for the residents and the staff. Quick look at the existing facility. The existing facility in the, in the gray areas are really the patient rooms, kind of want to focus on those as, as Hadi was demonstrating before. They, they really are smaller by today's standards, and they are, they, they share a single toilet that is non-accessible, and there's no showers within each one of those. So, if you were looking at the bottom, the bottom row of those, you can see that they're all either in three or two-bed configurations as we go forward. The other areas are, are either the staff support spaces, but in the upper left-hand corner, that's the kitchen. One of the things that's important about the kitchen in the skilled nursing facility is it actually serves both buildings onsite. So, not only is it the co-compliant kitchen for the skilled, the 60 beds in the skilled nursing facility, it also serves the 25 acute care beds along with the staff and visitors going for, going through there. So, in the new facility, that is actually also still the same strategy, and so, part of that is when we, when we relocated the buildings, make sure that they, that they had a pathway, if you will, that went sort of straight across from service point to service point for both deliveries of goods, in this case, meals, and even then sometimes patient transport. As Hadi said, one of the advantages of the site is, is that it is directly adjacent to emergency services, so patients can transfer fairly easily. The new, the new building, as we said, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit larger, but all of those are, all the gray areas, the same color codes represent semi-private patient rooms, either on the ends or maybe in the middle of some of those units. It's designed to be a little bit of a residential pod, if you will, so there's, there's four pods with 15 beds apiece, and there's a 10% mix of, of private beds. On the, in, in the direct center, the, the area in the direct center of the building is, is either the dining or the activity space, and the courtyard to the east side of that is, is largely for staff. But the blue box is also important with the rehab services that they have in the, have in the building. The idea is, is that they can, staff and residents can actually, from a therapy perspective, can have therapy, you know, inside, but then integrate therapy outside in the gardens as well. So, some integration of indoor/outdoor spaces is part of the program. On the right side, that's where the, the kitchen is, so in the upper right-hand corner, that's where the actual service and loading dock is, so goods can come in and actually go out that same side. The, the exterior, we'll, we'll wrap up with the exterior elevations and, and renderings. I think one of the, the primary goals was to build on, build on the work that's been completed in the front side of the hospital and also pick up from that, we'll say, Spanish, Mediterranean revival style going forward with the new building. The first elevation is the, the main, is the main, is the main elevation. On the right side, that's where the main entry is at the peak, where you actually enter into a covered, a covered courtyard. And as you go down the, travel to the left on that elevation, you'll see the, sort of the, the small two windows. As we mentioned, the, all the patient room windows face into the courtyard. So, from a landscape perspective, we'll take advantage of landscaping on those elevations since we really, it's either the backside of a patient bed or a restroom that you're seeing from, that you'd be seeing from that side, so there's not a lot of windows. But we thought it'd be a nice transition to keep the, the patients and residents focused into the courts, but then also give us an opportunity to landscape the front of the building and the elevations. The next elevation is the, is the, I don't want to call it the backside of the building, but it is the, the side where the activity spaces as well as the rehab functions come in and out, so you can see the two arched, two arched windows in the, in the, in the middle. And I believe that is the, the physical therapy, physical therapy areas going out into the courtyard. Right beside that, to the right, it actually recesses in a little bit, but that's the access indoor/outdoor from the activity rooms into the, into the outdoor gardens. The, the next elevation is sort of looking at the service side, so focusing in the middle, in the middle of the elevations, you can actually see the patient wings coming out. That's the, sort of the rhythm of the patient windows that are on the right and the left side. But right in the center, where you see sort of the low spot and the shadow spot, that, that's where the service point is. And as you can see, it's, it's sunken down so that there actually is sort of a dock, which they actually don't have today. And then it's shielded by the building on one side, retaining wall and a cover and a screen on the, on the, on the right side. And then the last elevation is from really the, the, it's almost predominantly patient rooms on the other side of the building that are, that are looking out towards that grove of oak trees on the northern side of the property. The building in terms of overall height is about where you see the, the red line for the tile roof. It's about 12 feet to that point, and it's another six and a half feet to the top of the roofs, we're in the 18, 18 and a half foot range. Those are designed to also serve as the equipment screens, so it's only a partial roof, but we've made it tall enough so that the mechanical equipment actually sits behind, behind that component, and it's actually what's driving the initial 12-foot height. Some of the conceptual renderings, the first view on the right, on the upper, upper corner is really the view looking towards that circular drop-off, if you will, with, we'll call it a feature or a landmark tree, kind of right in the middle of that experience. But then you'll see the, the entry trellis. Part of that entry trellis is designed not only to go into the building, but also, also serve as that interaction between staff that's at the acute care facility coming up to, coming up to the, the skilled facility, and as well as public coming out, because there is a dining room and outdoor dining that's, that's associated with the, with the kitchen area there, because it does serve the entire campus. The lower image is the, a look at the courtyard on the back. We mentioned those arched windows, which is where physical therapy is, but the idea is, is that from a therapy perspective, you can do your therapy inside, you can do the therapy outside, and then of course, just the activity in terms of the garden space that, that goes around. The left-hand side, little bit of the, we'll, we'll say the, the interior concepts of, of part of the building, and then the lower corner, trying to integrate this new replacement facility with the, some of the work that's already been done on the campus, so there's continuity between, between those components. And I think, I think that's the, I think that's the last slide, so, so I thank you, and any questions, or if Hadi or Scott, do you have anything you'd like to add before?
Yeah, I think stepping back to how we laid out this building, it was really important, first, first and foremost, for the courtyards to be the organizing device. And then second, that the way the fingers work is that as you sort of reach out to the property lines, we didn't get, we, we didn't get long...
You need to speak into the mic.
We didn't get long, parallel sort of facades, paralleling very close to residential. So, if you look at the sort of, these end wings, they're very much residential in scale and in keeping with the scale of, say, the condo buildings on either side. So, that was really important for us. So, as you go along, you see a number of smaller kind of buildings, and you don't really get the sort of feeling that it is in fact a 32,000 single building. We looked at racetrack designs where it became more of a single sort of square, and then went to this, which sort of reaches out, outside... then went to this, which sort of reaches out, outside itself into the courtyards and the gardens. And, and that was really a fundamental sort of organizing principle as we were going through this. Again, some of the things locally, Ojai Valley Inn, the gardens, the courtyards, how the building sort of go out and grab sort of landscape features was an important part of, of doing this. We wanted it above and beyond to be residential in feel, and not be institutional.
So with that, any questions? Happy to answer.
So I do have a quick question. You know, what you just described, Scott, and I'm noticing that this lower right-hand picture is different from what I'm seeing there. What, is that the updated, that must be the updated version? Because I am looking at the same thing, right? This has the ra, this radius pathway going to it? Are the two different concepts?
We updated, yeah. That was the first one, and then everybody's, whoa, you're not putting grass back there, are you? And, and so we went back, and, and as we developed it, we started saying, no, we're, we're going, you know, native, and Lisa Phelps is helping us out, and she was aghast that we would even show that kind of drawing. So, you know, it was her push, and, and so, you know, we want, modified that. I have to say, we're sort of doing two things. We're doing concept here because we really want your feedback. But at the same time, our schedule's moving forward, and we have, have submitted a formal just, I think, last week. Took us a while to get here to concept for you. So obviously we want your, your input and, and to make us better, but know that we, we have sort of moved along and addressed formal. So some of these, these drawings are actually upgrades from the concept drawings that we originally submitted a while ago.
Right.
And, and so we wanted to.
Okay. So what's happening with the, you know, it's great that it's a LEED project, that's always exciting. What are you doing about drainage, rain gardens, or what kind of applications are you, what are you going to do with the water when, when it does decide to rain around here?
We're going to follow all the MS4 requirements that are, that are, but you know, you know, the gardens, and we have a lot of places that we could capture water and reuse it and things like that. I think we're very interested in, in going that way. And having, obviously retention has to be on-site, so.
And the site, we'll put back the aerial image real quick. The site actually helps us with that a little bit. It, it slopes from the, from the north side down to the south, and so as we're putting that pad in the middle, it allows us to manage that drainage, not only on-site, but then what actually control the runoff as it goes down.
So it's going to, the site, the grading's going to flatten out that, obviously where the building's sitting, and decided as currently proposed.
If you put that site plan up there. The site, basically, we flatten out, we go up a little bit, we terrace where the existing, where the new parking lot's going to be, we terrace up. Then we flatten out, and then we have a retaining wall that, that in fact terraces, and then you get the natural hillside coming up. So the building sort of balances itself on the site. And in fact, on one of the wings in the upper left, that's, that's close to the property line, it actually sits down into the site, about six to seven feet. So again, working with that, that, the, the concept of balancing it out.
Is the finished floor elevation of the proposed building pretty close to the existing acute center?
No, it's up higher. It's up higher.
What is the difference, elevation difference? Scott, I didn't really, can't really see any-
It's probably-
Slope between the two?
Seven to eight feet higher.
Okay, so you climb a gradual hill.
Because that site, that site moves up. If you, if you go around the edge of the back of the existing CCC now, there is a, a very big bank to get back up to grade, because they cut that building in too.
All right. Questions for architects?
I have a couple of questions. It looks like you're probably going to be removing, or proposing to remove about 14 or so oaks, which I hate to see go. But I, I do want to compliment you on your presentation, and the layout, and the gardens, and going LEED. I really appreciate that. So I, you know, I understand, and I see where they're located, and it's right where you need to build. I would encourage you to replace, and I believe most of those are co-sly oak, when I went out to the site, to replace them with the same species. And also, another thing you may want to consider is the Sites Initiative, which is a landscape program very similar to LEED. So you may want to look that up. I mean, if you're going to go and, and do this. But the Sites Initiative will also include, you know, like permeable surfaces, capturing stormwater on-site. I mean, you're already going in that direction, but you may want to put another brass button on your collar, if you're doing something like that. And the other question I had was the, I just wanted to be clear about that secondary access on Kuyama. I knew, Kuyama can tend to be, well, kind of a dangerous road at times. You know, a lot of schoolchildren use that because of the adjacent schools. And so that would be one of my concerns, but if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounded like it was just more of a backup access?
It was. It's, it's, it's really a notion of, if we have a major event happening and-
And you had to get in.
And we had to get in, and something happened to the, to Maricopa Highway, we need, you know, you just sensibly need to be out. But we very much want to design this as a lane, where it has gravel shoulders, and it's as narrow as we can get it. We're working with the fire department to see what that, how narrow we can get, get it from their standpoint. But we don't really want to formalize it.
Yeah.
We may even put a few trees that, you know, sort of have to go around.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Would you also have it gated, or would there be a code or something, so that it would only be used for emergencies, or?
We weren't thinking that at this point. You know, we, we have talked to all the providers, the ambulance people, everything, about the notion of still utilizing the site essentially from Maricopa Highway, and we'll have agreements for that. So we don't see the, the high-traffic coming, coming from there.
What about the, you, there is another entrance at the front where the hospital is, and I know you've had cones or bollards up there, you know, since you did the renovation. Is that going to be reopened or used, or?
I think that was, I think that was temporary when we were doing construction.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're referring to is on the east side of the acute care hospital.
Yes.
That previously, my understanding was the ambulance entrance, when the emergency room was on the east side of the building. And it's, it's in fact, that, it's kind of like a driveway, and it's really not safe for, for cars to go through that, that alleyway. And, and the reason is, is that the, on the east side of the building, on the northeast side of the acute care hospital, there's a set of double doors that, that open up, and it's really staff-only, and that's where all the food and other supplies kind of get delivered into the acute care hospital. And there'd be no way where you can have car, it'd have to be a one-lane driveway, and on top of that, I'd be really worried as people are coming in and out of that building. It's just not safe. What we've done is we've put some planners, just adjacent there. Again, in case of an emergency, I, it would be an, you know, I, I guess we, we would open it up from that. Those planners could just be moved out of the way.
Twice over.
Yeah. And, and really, I mean, with the, we, we sit on just under eight acres, and so when you're doing a site plan, you, you have to go through so many scenarios, and it was in that spirit that the driveway came up as well.
Yeah, I remember this when you came, you know, for the hospital project, and the question came up, and I was just wondering if anything had transpired, you know, between then and now, so.
Well, and that's, that's our major spine, to get to that little, if you see up on that, that little dentation is where the doors come in. So we would-
Right.
We would be getting sort of major supplies. We have a major walkway that goes right, that's the connection really between the two.
Light, please.
Between the two, sorry.
Further questions, though?
With regard to your neighbors, how do you plan to mitigate during construction? And how long do you propose construction's going to take?
I'll start with the, the duration of construction. So what, what the hope is, is that going through the planning process, along with OSHPOD, that somewhere around September, we could actually start the grading exercises, you know, once we, once we get through the planning process. And that'll take about 12 to 14 months, just to go through the replacement facility side. And then after that, I think we've estimated, we'll say, two to three months to complete the parking structure. So when you look towards the end of 2016, if we can stay on schedule, we'd like to have, have the facility open and operable, and then the face construction completed in terms of the parking lot. As, as it relates to, you know, some of the other mitigations related to construction, we talk about dust control and other types of components, obviously we will be implementing those as part of the, you know, the conditions of approval, working with staff. So whether that be the watering trucks, or the grates, as we, as things, you know, enter and egress, you know, all the idling times and those sort of components that come with the approval process, we will definitely be working with those. And, you know, I'd let, I'd let Hadi speak to, you know, working even closer, you know, with the neighbors on some of the other things that will probably come out of that process.
Yeah, I, I'll just add it. I think on the, on the creek side, on the east side of the building, where the creek side neighbors are, I think we have some good precedence in working with them when we did the parking lot project. We, the, the hospital wanted to put up a, a wall, and, and we even coordinated parts of that wall, instead of going straight down the property line and affecting the, the landscape, the trees. It kind of zigzags around to give it more of a natural look, and we likely want to follow that process as we go through, along the property line as we start the project. The, it's a, it's a concrete, it kind of, it's a textured concrete wall. I don't know what, what type, what it's called.
It has a wood kind of look to it. We were, we've talked during our, our meetings with neighbors about getting that fence line put up prior to construction, or the first thing, so we could start to mitigate, you know, construction noise and, and that right off the bat. So-
Yeah.
That's all in, in, in how we sort of manage the construction to minimize the effect on the neighbors.
So it go, it goes to the ground. On the east side, I think, where there's currently no fence, that's going to be, you know, we'll have to coordinate that, and kind of probably actually walk it with some of the residents and, and be able to do that. For the hitching post, as we've had the conversation, we've shared the same concept as well of doing a, a fence. I think there's an existing chain link fence, so it would probably be easier to go along in, in terms of that. But we would, we would envision going through that same process of really talking with the associations, and about how we want to address it. And I think in both instances, we'd hope to have those, the, the walls up, you know, prior to grading, essentially, so they can address it really upfront.
Are we going to go through and give our comment, or is this the topic?
Well, no, I think we want to hear from the public, too, if there's no further questions for the architects.
Well, so is, have you decided, is it going to be a LEED-certified project, or are you still in the, trying to convince the powers that be, that stage?
Yeah, I, I could try to attempt to answer this. This project's going to come down to budget. Why are we at 60 beds as opposed to 66? It comes down to the budget. And so we have a line item in the project that we've really, you know, I think, teams really fought to kind of keep it in there, to be able to, to do this. Many of the concepts, regardless, because we think it's good design, are going to follow through. I have some experience in doing, we did a LEED-OSHPOD three, it's a LEED clinic, one of the first that I understand that actually got a USGBA award, that, that we did, actually in, with the Rasmussen Associates, one of our vineyard clinics, and we did that. And a lot of the costs is with the commissioning and actual cost of going through that process. We still believe in it, we still want to do it, and so I, the answer's yes. We, but when it comes down to the, the project in totality, it's going to come down to whether, whether or not we can afford that versus having a patient room that, we're, we're going to want to have a patient room in there. So that's, that's the challenging part of going through this process.
So if it's just a matter of paying for commissioning, what level of LEED are you striving for?
I have my opinion.
Go ahead.
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong. I think what we've said is we want to aspire for silver, and we hope to beat that out. And that's, that's the same way we approached it when we worked with Rasmussen, Rasmussen and Associates, and Scott, at our vineyard clinic, and we came in at gold. So, but that's, that's, that's our hopes.
And I think, you know, one of the things that helps us out here is the, the current changes to the California Building Code and the, and the green building standards. It puts us way out there and, and, you know, able to achieve LEED better than when they weren't there. So I think we'll get there.
Yeah, I mean, I did a lot of analysis for the Ojai Valley Schools' last project. We didn't go, we didn't do the LEED certification, but essentially, I, basically what my analysis came down to is, pretty much, new California Building Code is essentially LEED silver, you know, more or less.
Yeah.
Plus or minus, you know, a few thousand dollars. I did find, and this may be something you might want to investigate further, there was a lot of interest from UCSB, from the Bren School. I know students were calling me volunteering to do the certification project, process, so-
Wow.
Something to keep in mind.
Great. Well, we, this is a public hearing, and actually, we would like to hear from the public come forward on this. I have a couple speaker cards in front of me, and the first one is Marion Inchostigie?
Good, good.
Okay.
Inchostigie. Marion Inchostigie, 310 Church Road. I'm the president of the homeowners' Hitching Post Homeowners Association. Oh, and horse. I'd like to refer you to the first slide, which is the kind of flat slide, just so that you can orient yourself to us. Thank you. That is us, down on the very bottom of the, of the page. So you can see our concern and our interest. But first of all, I want to say, we are wholeheartedly in support of this, this project, and we need to thank Mr. Lashkari, who has been above and beyond with his openness and willingness to consult with us and address our concerns. And as his favorite saying, as a friendly neighbor, as opposed to seeing when you're not such a friendly neighbor in the last bout. So we, we hope to solve all these problems before we get to that. I have, we also have in your packet, I believe, our secretary sent in some of the issues that we presented to Hadi at our meeting, and it was, most of those issues were really addressed, probably all were addressed, maybe not answered, because at the time, he was not able to speak to everything. But he's more than willing to address it. So we feel really good about it. But there are two points that I would like to point out to you. One is in your environmental review that you did, you say the city, the city will complete an environmental analysis, and they're talking about the SEQA. And I'm wondering if that would include, my concern being that lane or road, which is a two-lane road that will exit onto Kuyama. Kuyama is narrow, it's hilly, there's blind corners there. So my concern is, are we looking into, has the city, or will the city look into the safety of that issue? I'd like your thought about a gate or a closure, since it obviously is needed for emergency, there's no question about that. But I can see zooming high school kids, I can see people zooming, making shortcuts through to, to Maricopa. And anyway, so that's a concern. And then, other than that, other than the questions, we talked about the wall, privacy rodents, which we breed to, you know, with amazing speed over there, and they're going to be all disturbed and coming to visit us. And so that's kind of, that list that we presented to Hadi, and he did address it. He said he would keep as many of those rodents as he could, but I don't, I don't believe him. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Joe DeVito. Welcome.
Chair Foster, it's nice, nice to see you. We sat at lunch one time a number of years ago, and asked if you would mind sitting in the chair where you're sitting, and-
It's been a while.
Yes, it's been a long time. But I'm Joe DeVito, live at 410 Church Road, unit number 49. My wife and I are the oldest residents, not in age, but we have lived there 39 years, and are, we have a 30-foot, we are the closest of the condos to the new facility. If you look- If you look at the north wing and you go to the west end of that north wing, we are very, very close to that. If I stand at my patio window and look out, I'm 19 feet from the fence. If I walk 10 foot across my patio, from my pen to my patio to the fence is nine feet. So, so I have some concerns and you've talked about noise during construction, you've talked about, and Cattling, you've talked about landscaping, et cetera. I know that they will do a very, very good job. One of the concerns I have, and I, I was pleased to see that Steve Frank with the Lifeline had a report that he did, that he didn't see the use of that property, the road off of Kuyama. I also looked, spent a lot of time looking at your parking plan. And let me just give you a little background on that parking plan because you don't have it. But north of, where they have parking lot three, they show that there are 44 spots there. A number of years ago, the hospital was told on a Saturday morning, there were a call to two people saying, does the hospital have a permit? Put a gravel parking lot. And I said, well, we'll find out on Monday morning. And Monday morning, the planning director said, he just told someone at the hospital, go ahead and, and do it, no one will notice it. It happened to be one, one of the council members lived right close to it and I happened to be on, on the other side of it. But they printed a permit for 64 parking places. They built, they built 32, they still have, and that, the additional 32 would go out into parking lot D, which they have, which is, which is a dirt lot. And in looking at your concept review, it looks on the east side of that building is all landscaping and it doesn't look like they're going to extend, extend their, extend their parking. One strong recommendation that I would have is that they don't use any dirt area for parking, that they put in asphalt. Because since, and, and Hadi and I had talked about that before they started, he said, do you mind if we don't do anything with the parking lot? And no problem at all. And they have used that very wisely. They've used that parking area, the dirt area to, to store equipment. Right now, they have stacks of dirt which they'll be able to use in their construction. It's worked out very well for them. The whole time that they were in construction on the front of the building, not once was water ever applied to that dirt back there. And the people at Creekside were eating dirt that whole time. So one of the questions that, I don't know whether water is available to you or not, but I would suggest that water be available during construction. Number two is that, that they, if they're going to use an area back there for parking, that, that it'd be asphalted. Because those people are filling up that dirt parking area right now. I appreciate the fact that you've gone out and looked at property. If you looked at the property, you found that there are jillions of gopher holes, it's not easy to walk the property. I hope that you go up at the outlet on Kuyama and look where that road exits there. Because as, as it exits, there is a decomposed granite sidewalk that the city put in there a number of years ago, and that's probably eight or nine feet from the curb itself. And there is an area, dirt area, that hilled area that is probably four feet high and there's a lot of oak trees, live oak that are planted on the, on that particular hill. And I know what they're going to do for every tree they take down, they're going to, they're going to put some other trees and replace them. I would just say this about the hospital, I am 110% behind everything they're doing. We knew when we moved there in 1975 that we were going to have some kind of a hospital facility there and do I wish it would go away? No, by the time they get it finished, I'll probably want to gate through because I want to be a resident, resident of the place. I have worked with a number of the hospital administrators that have been there down through the years. And one that was turned down, I'm glad it never did it because they would still be there. One particular administrative group wanted to put 7,200 square feet of relocatables where your, your long-term care facility.
Like modular?
Yeah. And, and Mr. Lashkari has been a gentleman. He has made himself available anytime you want to see him. He's given you a card and he's available. When he was at Hitching Post, he just did a super job of answering as many of the questions that, that he could. So I'm very pleased with the project. I just have no concern, major concerns. You've asked some good questions, Steve, you ask about water and drainage. North, just north, immediately north of the long-term care facility right now, when the employees take beds, equipment out on that asphalt area and they wash those, they hose that, the bedding and everything off, that water never drains. Now, if there's rain, it'll drain, drain down the west side of the long-term care facility, but the water that off the facility there, it just won't drain. So drainage is extremely important and I know they'll take, they'll make, take care of it. Ding, ding, ding. Thank you.
Is that your wife?
I appreciate what you people do.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Well, do we have any further questions at this point? I think, you know, what I, what I appreciate, what I, what I'm seeing here is the communication thing. And I, I know you guys did this on your last project and I think that's what made it really a pleasure to, to work with everybody, the, you know, your neighbors and you as a group. So, and I see that continuing in a spirit, if not even more, even more so. And so I think that's key to, to this project is, you know, continue to do what you're doing. I personally, I'm totally on board with the project. I think your presentation, your preparation is top-notch quality. We're looking at probably in the design review process, looking just really closely at those items that we talked about. And I think you know where we're coming from on, in that regard. Anybody else? There, it's really no public hearing, I, because this is a concept review, so. Yeah, anybody else is welcome to speak at this point in time. It's, that's, this is a discussion really. So any further comment from?
Just real quick, I just agree with everything Chair Foster said and it is really refreshing exactly tonight. It's really a polar opposite experience and, and we're really grateful for your preparation and your willingness to work with the applicant. It's really lovely. And as a Realtor, I'd just like to say, you know, when this project gets completed, it's going to be great for the property owners and I have stood in those properties that are adjacent. And although it's lovely, you know, that uncertainty about, oh, what's going to happen here is, always kind of puts a chill on, on a prospective home buyer. So I think it's going to be great that it's happening, it's done, it's taking the uncertainty out and when it's done, it, it sounds like it's going to be beautiful.
It's being presented so positively and Mr. Lashkari and I said, Lashkari?
You might want to speak from the, so we can, so we can hear you.
Hadi and I said, if we, if we got together with the wild group, we might be able to get some consensus.
Chair, I would just like to make a comment. We've, we've met a number of times with the development group here and they've been really receptive in getting us all the studies and these, a lot of these comments you've heard tonight, we've also expressed to them and that's why you're getting letters and, and kind of, you know, answering the questions. And my point is that we also the other day spoke about the Native American. I know that they have left tonight, but just so we're covering this because they did speak earlier and they pointed this project out as being one that hadn't been referred to them, but I believe that I called them directly. I spoke to all three of these gentlemen and they are reaching out to them. And it is not something that we are not addressing. So I just want, if you want to talk about it, wanted to clear that point.
It's good to make that point.
Yeah, actually, we're, we're, we're meeting with both of them tomorrow afternoon and we're really looking forward to that. So that's going to be in my office.
Okay.
And I just thought it was really important because we have done, both this group and ourselves staff here have really tried to vet out all of the issues and put everything in place so they can move expeditiously. And I, I think tonight it was left to the audience that, that we weren't doing that and I wanted to make that, that point of clarification.
Thank you for that. That's good. Well, if there aren't any further, Mr.?
Yeah, I, I spent a lot of time looking through this and I have some, just some concrete suggestions. I also wrote them up so you, you don't have, you don't have to take notes, I can just hand it to you. But I just wanted to kind of go through more just because as far as the green aspects of it go, and I know that typically on boards, the first thing they like to do is cut, cut the LEED stuff and it's, for whatever reason, it's the first thing on the chopping block. So, you know, I just hope that as you go through the process, don't be so attached to the certification, even though, the example I always use is that you can be the best gymnast in the world, but unless you have an Olympic gold medal, doesn't really matter. Anyhow, so a couple of notes I had. I see that there is about 90,000 square feet of parking area. The plan's called for trees to mitigate the heat island effect. By a rough calculation, I think you could put in about 1.3 megawatts of solar car, you know, solar carports on that. You know, you could, that would have an excellent long-term economic return. I mean, there's numerous projects you can look at in the Ojai Valley for data that will, that you can present. I would say of the proposed 172 onsite parking spaces, I would encourage at least 5% or nine spaces to be preferred parking in it for electric cars. To emphasize a more human-friendly facility rather than an auto-centric one, I would recommend expanding the width of the sidewalks, designating a bicycle lane and provide secure bicycle parking for both staff and visitors. A new project we just saw over on Pearl Street, I think it was by the Whitman Group, used these, they're called Eco Rain Parking Lot Water Retention Systems. Very cool. I'd suggest you take a look at those or something similar. This may be something you've already addressed, I don't really know, but I think the, the design has done a really great job of presenting the exterior, I mean, the exterior of the building just looks great, you know? And I hope that you bring the attention you've brought to the exterior of the building by bringing the outside world into the interior of the building. And what I, what I mean by that is that I hope every patient room has access to fresh air and daylight, which I think it does. I'd ask that the interior staff workrooms have skylights and, you know, have, they're not just sitting there and, you know, under fluorescent lights. Another thing I saw would, might be a really cool idea is an edible garden space near the dining facilities. If you really want to scare the board, talk to them about the living building challenge. But if you were going by that, they would recommend that 30% of your site would be edible gardens. I don't think you need that much. And then I would, I'd think a little playground for the kids when they come to visit their family or whoever would be nice. So anyhow, I have this, you can, I don't know how we can give it to, give it, Cherry, but I, I really think you got a great project.
Thanks, Matt. Any further questions, discussion, staff? Okay, I think that's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, that's what I said. This is my third meeting. I think this may be our model project here for the city at this moment. Yeah, or the site's initiative and, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Moving on to our next agendized item is a continuation of concept for, at 311 Montgomery Street, a concept review CR 14-06 for the demolition replacement of a two-story, single-family residence located at 311 South Montgomery Street. Sisters Parcel, a number 023-0-100-150. Staff has recommended, made the recommendation to continue this, this, this item. Hear from staff?
Yes, I want to make this really brief since it's a late hour. We're just asking for continuance. We've been working with the applicant. This is one of the houses, as you know, probably by the location, that's in the VMU. They're, you know, trying to work out these new setback rules that are in the VMU, coming in for a concept plan so that you can give her feedback on, you know, reduced setbacks, you know, what's allowed through the PD. It's just been a little bit of a struggle trying to get things to scale and, because it's a single-family home, but in the VMU, kind of working with the homeowner to get that. So she's, she's on board with this continuation. We just asked that you can open the public hair, or is this, why is this listed as a discussion item? It's actually was noticed as a public hearing, so it should be open, open the public hearing and then can, I am, continue it to the date certain, which is April 1st, so we don't need to?
So we, I need to officially open the public hearing?
That's hope.
No, it's, it was noticed as a concept review.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm right, I'm just sorry it's late. No, it is concept review. So anyway, we did notice it because we do that so the neighbors come out other, you know, to get all the feedback from the neighbors. So we don't want to notice it again, so we are still asking you to continue it. But Cherry is right, it's a discussion item.
And that's a motion, right Cherry? Or because it's a concept review? Okay.
You are right.
And that's what we'll do, we'll continue this item to the April 1st meeting. The planning commission, okay? All right.
Thank you. Would you like me to continue on?
Yeah, you, you know the agenda from here, so.
Yes, I do, thank you. Okay, so just the update on the code enforcement page. We do now have our code inspect, code compliance inspector. He is getting his feet underneath him at this point and is very busy and with lots of phone calls coming in as people find out that we do have him on board.
Who is that?
Vince Parker. And I would just say that I think either tonight or tomorrow night will be his first night where they'll be out doing night inspections for the dark sky. They are, the, you know, there's some training going on, so when I say they, he's out with a, with the senior building inspector. We are addressing some of the things that have been ongoing in the city of Ojai, such as continuing to get complaints about stores and restaurants not using the recyclable, you know, plates, continuing to see styrofoam out there. So they, so he's doing a lot of that outreach on that, the dark sky and probably will be ramping up on other things, you know, such as the leaf blower and things of that nature. So the, you can see?
A lot of motor homes, this is the front yard.
Yeah, you can see that there's the last, under turn the page, the last couple ones, trailers within the setback. So there's a lot going on with code enforcement right now.
This is the first time we've actually had allocated an actual code enforcement officer other than just having the building official go out and take a look or?
It's the first time we've actually done proactive enforcement instead of reactive, you know? So, so we're going out and some of these ordinances that, that the city has put in place, such as the styrofoam and the night sky, dark sky ordinance, you know, we're out really making sure people are really adhering to it and educating people. Okay, and then we have the director's decisions and I think that you can, again, see that most of these are, are pretty straightforward and minor. We have the deed restrictions for a second unit and addressing them, some sign permits and, you know, a couple zoning letters we did. Some tree permits, home occupations. I will tell you that I just did a zoning letter today for BST because, you know, they are being marketed for sale. I mean, you know, so BST has moved from that, the owner. And then finally, the upcoming Planning Commission meetings, the future agenda items, April 1st will include the 311 Montgomery, you just continued, that concept review. So we'll have, we will also be moving the DRP 1402 to, from California Solar to April 15th, as it was not ready to go on the 1st. So we'll have a little bit of shifting in there, but you'll have the Ojai Burger and a text amendment for the M1 Zone uses, which is addressing an issue that came before the city council as it relates to professional offices in the M1 Zone. And with that, I think, just keep in mind, we're trying to schedule the, I think that's all my reports, the first neighborhood planning workshop, which will be in, probably the first weekend in May, a Saturday, as we, as you guys all know, that was in the proposal that was given to us by Sergeant Town Planning. And moving forward, and I guess you guys had a meeting on Complete Streets today, so with that, I include my reports.
Well, we should hear from our Complete Streets Chair.
Yes, and Stephen, feel free to chime in. So we did have, we canceled our normal meeting that we have on the first Wednesday of the month, and today we met with two, one representative from Nelson Nygaard, and there also was one member from Sergeant's team that attended the meeting, well, they actually put the meeting on. And so we had a great meeting, it was almost close to three hours, wasn't it? I think so. But anyway, we went through the process of how they are going to move forward and, you know, information that they needed, and we talked about specific projects that we're doing right now in the city. I don't know, that's just kind of the general overview.
Yeah, what's exciting about, I think, what happened today for me, it kind of gelled the idea of Complete Streets coming together with neighborhood planning. So we have the two representatives, the facilitators, if you will, who are actually working together in all this, and by doing that, they're really, complete the picture, becomes really a holistic approach in design, all aimed at implementation at some point. So it's rather exciting to get this thing kicked off, so it's good stuff.
And I might add that, so what they're planning to do for the Complete Streets is to have three workshops, the date to be determined, but we did discuss that we'd want to do it before June, just to make sure we got all the, you know, parents of students, if they wanted to be involved with the process. And it's still to be determined what the exact topic of each one of those three presentations is going to be, you know, whether it's kind of a geographical definition, or if it's like one night it's pedestrian, or the next night it's bicycle. I'm just throwing that out for example, but that's to be determined. And then at our next regular meeting, which will be April 1st, 2:30 to 4:30 here at City Hall, we are going to be going over a list of any other projects or information that we want to turn over to the consultant. So that's going to be our topic for our next meeting in a couple of weeks, and the public is invited.
I also want to also remind everybody that we're having training. I think we got, you all got an email regarding, and I know Mac has signed up for the training that's coming here, the city's hosting, the state coming down and doing cultural resources training for the Historic Preservation Commission, as it relates to ordinances and historic buildings and that type of thing, so you're all welcome.
What is the date on that?
It's the 9th. But there is limited seating, so they have, I think I sent everyone the link, and you have to, it's free, but you have to register your spot.
RSVP.
Yeah, RSVP, thank you. So I just want to remind everybody that if you're interested in that, it is, it's going to be at the Boyd Center.
One more thing. Diana Gould was supposed to report Steve McClary wanted to ask the commission about the public art review committee?
Yes, that's correct. I have to read this note here. If, I guess Commissioner Merck has been the representative from the Planning Commission to the committee to approve public art, and if he's not interested, and obviously he's not here today, but if he's no longer interested in serving in that capacity, if the commission can point someone else to serve in that capacity. So we can take that up in the next meeting, if you'd like.
As it was on the agenda, as that would be.
I think also, then maybe the next meeting, we can put on the agenda that you guys talk about your training, and if you want to recap any of that, of where you went the other day.
That's a good idea.
You know, so we'll put that on the agenda too, and for you guys to talk about that.
So Councilmember Haney, we're not going to forget you tonight.
You know, I cheated, I took a, I took a half a Ambien. Not because you guys put me to sleep, but because I needed to put myself to sleep. And so I'm sitting here and I'm going, whoa, okay. So a couple things. Once again, you guys had some difficult issues. You did a great job trying to help them find a solution, and some people you can, and some people you can't. That was evident. And, you know, part of me is, you know, we had a big vacant lot behind us where I live, and I remember one time my wife saying, "Well, we're not going to let them build there, and they're not going to put a two-story home there." And I said, "Well, when you make that call, don't mention my name." Because I have, I just, I have a belief that if that's your property and that's yours, you have a right to it, and do what you want in that area, just don't paint the house pink, and, you know, don't do dumb things like that. But the reality is, we all have rights, and we all have perceived rights. And I think what's interesting is watching that group fight over their beliefs, and then watching this group discuss their beliefs. And I think a lot of times in life, we enter interactions with our agenda, and not really willing to listen to the other person. And then that brings me back to the first book my wife bought me. I had a little nine-year-old son at the time. I don't know why she gave me this book, but I thought it was cute. It was How to Talk to Your Children So They'll Listen, and How to Listen to Your Children So They'll Talk. And it was a real interesting book, because I took it to work, I was a supervisor, and it was like, this really works for people with adults. So maybe we need to get one. And when we have situations like this, we give them a copy and come back in 30 days, and we'll have a better idea as to how to evolve this. The only question I really had regarding the Wells issue, and I'll look into it, because I'm sure it's going to come before us, I don't know what stadium seating is, and no one clarified that. They had stadium seating, but what type? Is it concrete? Are they benches? Are they just going to grasp the knoll? I was concerned that there's no construction document regarding it. So, and does the stadium seating hold 250? Does it hold 500? So that was one of the questions I had. And the second thing was, if they have to, do they have to come before us and request a permit to hold a tournament? And how many tournaments are they allowed to have a year? Because as in any money-making venture, if we make money the first time, obviously we're going to go for it the second time. And so the more we make, the more we want to play. And that would be a concern as to how many of these tournaments could they have a year? And I don't think that was addressed, or is addressed. So those are some of the things that I looked at. But I thought the questions you guys asked, once again, thorough, complete, competent, did your homework, and I can't say enough for you three. Again, you kept us focused. You know, at one point, we were wandering, and Kathleen, you brought us right back into the middle of it, and I appreciate that, because time's valuable, real valuable. And having said that, let's go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.